Ladies and gentlemen,[S01] esteemed members of the Planning Board and valued community representatives, I welcome you all to this evenings of the Saco Planning Board. As chairman is my privilege to convene this gathering dedicated to the thoughtful planning and development of our community. Today,[S01] we come together with a shared commitment to shaping the future of our city in a manner that reflects our values,[S01] respects our heritage,[S01] and fulfills the needs of our residents both now and in the future. Our agenda tonight contains important matters,[S01] each requiring our careful consideration, expertise,[S01] and collaboration. As we engage in our deliberations,[S01] let us remember the profound impact these decisions will have on the lives of all,[S01] keeping in mind we are residents like you. It is our duty to maintain transparency,[S01] fairness,[S01] and inclusivity in our proceedings, ensuring that the voices of all are heard and respected. Together,[S01] we must embrace the responsibility entrusted to us by our community,[S01] working diligently and thoughtfully to chart a course that phosphors growth,[S01] prosperity,[S01] and harmony. With that,[S01] I would like to call this meeting of the Tuesday,[S01] September sixteenth,[S01] two thousand and twenty-five Saco Planning Board to order. I look forward to the productive discussions and meaningful outcomes that lie ahead. Thank you. With us this evening,[S01] we have myself,[S01] Matt Provencio,[S01] the Chair of the Board. To my left,[S01] we have our Vice Chair,[S01] Joyce Larry Clark,[S01] along with Planning Board Members Jeff Bruschow,[S01] Camille White,[S01] Catherine Pelini,[S01] and to my right,[S01] Planning Board Members Carrie Lynn Lane and Jim Moyer. With us this evening,[S01] we also have Lisa Harmon,[S01] our Planning Compliance Manager,[S01] Lauren Forte,[S01] our Assistant City Planner,[S01] and we have with us this evening Ben Smith,[S01] our Consulting City Planner. With us this evening,[S01] we have a Planning Board training from six,[S01] from now to about seven thirty P.[S01] M. And also this evening,[S01] we're going to have Alex from the Saco IT Department. He's going to be doing some videography with the board,[S01] so if you see him,[S01] don't be alarmed. It's just for city stuff. And with that,[S01] we will,[S01] we'll jump right into our training,[S01] and I believe we are going to start with the team from S.[S01] M.[S01] P.[S01] D.[S01] C.,[S01] and then we'll move to a presentation by Phil Saucier.
Thank you for having us. Let me just give this a second to get loaded up. Looks like it's doing its thing. While that loads,[S02] I'll introduce myself and my colleague. My name is Reagan Young. I'm the Director of Communications and Member Services at Southern Maine Planning and Development Commission. With me is James Rather. He's our Director of Strategic Initiatives. Let me see,[S02] I think this is,[S02] should be coming anytime. We tested it before the meeting,[S02] but you never know. Oh,[S02] here we go. There we go,[S02] that looks right. Okay,[S02] excellent. We're going to try and keep this high level and quick,[S02] because we know you have a long agenda in front of you,[S02] but I think we'll have a few minutes for questions,[S02] and of course,[S02] you can,[S02] you'll,[S02] you'll have our contact information and can reach out to us after the fact. So,[S02] to begin,[S02] some of you are probably familiar with S.[S02] M.[S02] P.[S02] D.[S02] C.,[S02] but as a refresher, we were founded in nineteen sixty-four,[S02] and we just celebrated our sixtieth anniversary last year. We are one of seven regional planning organizations across the state. We were created by state statute to provide technical assistance and planning assistance to municipalities in various different sectors and topics. Those things have changed a lot over the years,[S02] and these days,[S02] we focus on land use,[S02] transportation,[S02] sustainability,[S02] resilience,[S02] and economic development. And that's a map there of our region,[S02] so we are actually housed in Saco. Our offices are on Saco Island,[S02] but we serve thirty-nine towns,[S02] which covers all of York County and parts of southern Oxford County. And so,[S02] as I kind of mentioned,[S02] how we can help you,[S02] basically,[S02] our organization exists to assist municipalities and our members. So that includes technical assistance,[S02] which can be help with any kinds of processes that municipal staff,[S02] elected officials are unfamiliar with across diverse planning issues,[S02] connections to resources either at the state or federal level,[S02] or other agencies across the state,[S02] and we also house several programs and initiatives under our own organization, which are intended to be responsive to our members' needs,[S02] which again,[S02] changes over time and has changed over the,[S02] the life of our organization. So,[S02] as you are all aware,[S02] there was very recently,[S02] in the most recent legislature, eighteen twenty-nine,[S02] L.[S02] D.[S02] eighteen twenty-nine was passed,[S02] and that new statute includes lots of different requirements,[S02] as I think you might be becoming aware of,[S02] and one of those is the mandating of municipal reviewing authorities attending trainings. It's our understanding that this training that you're going to be attending tonight is going to meet those requirements,[S02] and that they,[S02] you know,[S02] we have kind of been following the state and know that there's going to be rulemaking under this law,[S02] not sure that that's going to be finalized until the turn of next year,[S02] but it's our understanding that the intent of the law,[S02] everything in the law is going to remain the same,[S02] the rulemaking is just going to clarify what those requirements actually mean. So,[S02] you know,[S02] stay tuned on that,[S02] but I know you're going to learn a lot more from Phil in a little bit. I'm going to pass it on to James to talk about our programs.
Thank you,[S03] Reagan. I'm just going to do a brief overview of S.[S03] M.[S03] P.[S03] D.[S03] C.'s divisions and what we all do at the agency. Slide here. So our Transportation Planning Division,[S03] we have a very robust transportation planning function that serves communities in our region. I want to note that there's some administrative distinctions that may not be completely clear that our,[S03] what we call CACs,[S03] our Metropolitan Planning Organization,[S03] serves everything from Kittery up to the Kenny Bunks,[S03] but here in Saco,[S03] there's actually kind of a administrative quirk where you're under G.[S03] P.[S03] Cog's N.[S03] P.[S03] O.[S03] PACs,[S03] so a little bit of a kind of,[S03] not superintuitive setup there,[S03] but it's just helpful to know that kind of how it's set up. But as far as what we do with our N.[S03] P.[S03] O.,[S03] it includes a lot of bike,[S03] ped,[S03] transportation planning work,[S03] helping communities ideate on capital projects,[S03] liaising with Maine D.[S03] O.[S03] T.,[S03] and just helping make,[S03] make smart transportation planning decisions overall, I would say. On the economic development side,[S03] we operate the largest brownfields program in New England, very successful. If you look right across the river,[S03] we've got projects that have our brownfields dollars in them over in Bitterford or over on Pearl Street. We have a role in convening businesses and institutions and nonprofit partners to implement our region-wide economic development strategy known as the CEDs,[S03] or Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy. On the land use side,[S03] land use is long been S.[S03] M.[S03] P.[S03] D.[S03] C.'s bread and butter,[S03] I would say. We work with planning boards on development review,[S03] ordinance amendments,[S03] we have comp plan updates going on all across the region right now,[S03] as well as some ad hoc work in the housing space to address our housing crisis,[S03] which we're going to talk a little bit more about in a,[S03] in a moment or two. Reagan?
Yeah,[S02] so a few examples of some of the housing work we've been ingrained in lately. I'm not sure if any of you are familiar with what we call the Joint Land Use Study. This is a large project that's actually a partnership between the Portsmouth Naval Shipyard and the town of Kittery,[S02] but the work has been going on for many years,[S02] and because of the spread of the shipyard workforce and just how many of them live throughout York County,[S02] a lot of the planning products that come out of that work are relevant to the rest of our member communities. So,[S02] most recently,[S02] we have been doing a lot of housing work under this grant,[S02] including currently developing a toolkit of regulatory options for towns,[S02] which are sort of innovative or not very common in the state of Maine,[S02] but are established in other parts of New England,[S02] and we are going to be presenting that at an upcoming workshop in October,[S02] October fourteenth,[S02] so all of you,[S02] of course,[S02] are welcome,[S02] and the other workshops that we've done under that program are also available on our website. So it's just one of the places where we've found that we can fund some time to produce resources for communities. The other place where we've been very successful in producing programs and initiatives for towns is through the new D.[S02] E.[S02] C.[S02] D.,[S02] Department of Economic and Community Development Housing Opportunity Program,[S02] and most recently,[S02] well,[S02] I say most recently,[S02] we have a couple other grants that James is going to talk about,[S02] but our first grant through that program was a service provider grant,[S02] which Saco was actually a part of. They were one of the seven case study communities that we used to develop a methodology for developable lands and build-out scenarios,[S02] and also part of that,[S02] we tested sort of the first of its kind in the state,[S02] a housing suitability analysis. So,[S02] we were able to compare a small case study of coastal communities with a small case study of inland communities,[S02] and better understand what data is available to do those analyses,[S02] and what kinds of planning outcomes could come out of it for towns. So,[S02] as much as the,[S02] the results may have been helpful for future planning,[S02] really what we learned is the methodology and being able to transfer that and build upon that in,[S02] in future projects.
Yeah,[S03] and just to elaborate a little bit more on our H.[S03] O.[S03] P.[S03] work,[S03] we've got two other projects underway,[S03] under the Housing Opportunity Program,[S03] one of which is a collaborative effort between three of our member communities,[S03] that would be Kittery,[S03] Kenny Bunk,[S03] and Kenny Bunkport,[S03] on doing some ordinance audits,[S03] so looking at each zoning ordinance in each community and thinking from a housing production perspective,[S03] what's working in the ordinance well,[S03] and what things could use tweaking to help unlock housing production. So looking at existing conditions around housing trends,[S03] what's being built where in the community,[S03] how,[S03] how does the zoning dimensional and use standards kind of interlock with your other standards in the community to allow housing to either happen,[S03] or maybe there's different impediments that could be potentially solved through some smart zoning text amendments. So we're doing that,[S03] we're going to be facilitating some conversations with the public,[S03] with the development community around what are the,[S03] what's the tone of,[S03] around housing development,[S03] like how,[S03] how does the community perceive it? What types of housing are received well versus aren't received so well,[S03] and have some more issues getting through the entitlements process,[S03] through the development review process? And then the third piece,[S03] which I'm really excited to talk about,[S03] is we're examining the feasibility of how might we create a regional affordable housing tracking tool or function that would live at S.[S03] M.[S03] P.[S03] D.[S03] C.,[S03] where we would have the ability to help communities who want to look at,[S03] say you have affordable housing constructed pursuant to L.[S03] D.[S03] two thousand and three,[S03] or pursuant to density bonuses or inclusionary zoning, helping to track over time the affordability restrictions,[S03] and making sure that those units stay with the tenants who they are intended to serve over the long term. So,[S03] almost creating a business plan for a new component,[S03] component for the agency, I guess you could call it. And then the third of our H.[S03] O.[S03] P.[S03] grants will be examining some different options for contextually appropriate housing development. So,[S03] how might you build a contextually appropriate town home,[S03] or duplex,[S03] or multifamily project in a way that speaks to the,[S03] the architectural and design vernacular of southern Maine? And then communities will be able to have those potentially as models for developer comes in,[S03] you could say,[S03] have a look at this,[S03] this is what makes sense for our community. So we're working on that as well. And then I wanted to talk,[S03] of course,[S03] about our landmark Sustainability and Resilience Team. If you've been involved at all in any of the climate action planning work here in Saco, you've probably seen Karina and her team. They kind of bootstrapped that division of the agency into existence maybe five or so years ago,[S03] and it's been highly successful and really touted as a model across Maine of how you might do sustainability planning at the regional level,[S03] and that includes both efforts to help communities mitigate the impacts of climate change,[S03] how to make sure that things like ordinances respect the flow of water,[S03] so that you don't have inundated ground floors or development and flood plains. They do a lot of work around energy efficiency,[S03] so helping businesses with things like energy audits,[S03] municipal energy audits,[S03] and yeah,[S03] they're,[S03] they're everywhere,[S03] they're,[S03] they're, we're very,[S03] we're very proud of them,[S03] and they can get money for your community,[S03] they're good at that. And I want to also talk about,[S03] we have something that we're working on,[S03] it's sort of a joint in our,[S03] within the agency,[S03] an economic development and sustainability effort, and that is an effort to look at our regional electrical grid,[S03] and how might we make it more hardened and fortified in the face of increasing weather events? So,[S03] patterns of outages,[S03] where are outages happening? What's,[S03] what is the electrical system in a particular community? How is it set up? Where are the nodes? Where are the substations? And how might we,[S03] if outages do occur,[S03] make sure that damage is minimized,[S03] that a particular community has shelters available for warming,[S03] or that businesses maybe are able to have access to generators to keep themselves going and not lose revenue? And we're,[S03] we're well underway with this project,[S03] we expect to have a draft plan early next year,[S03] and it should be pretty cool once it's ready,[S03] so,[S03] look for it next year on our website.
And then lastly,[S02] just to round us out,[S02] we wanted to focus on a few of the Sustainability and Resilience projects that our team has done that are immediately relevant to Saco. So,[S02] a few years back,[S02] S.[S02] M.[S02] P.[S02] D.[S02] C.[S02] was successful in receiving an award from the National Fish and Wildlife Federation to complete the Climate Ready Coast Southern Maine Project. I don't know if any of you have seen that plan and the results of that plan,[S02] but it was one of the first for this region to actually assess coastal resilience needs,[S02] adaptation strategies,[S02] nature-based solutions on a truly regional scale,[S02] covering every coastal town from Kittery to Scarborough,[S02] which isn't even actually in our region,[S02] it just made sense in terms of the natural boundaries. And as a part of that project,[S02] they identified fifteen priority vulnerable areas,[S02] which was a,[S02] a long process to narrow that down,[S02] and of the fifteen,[S02] there are actually three that are immediately relevant to Saco. That was being the downtown,[S02] which is shared with Bitterford,[S02] Kemp Ellis,[S02] as well as Kenny Shores,[S02] and in that project,[S02] they actually identify specific adaptation measures that could be applicable to those areas. And the most direct work we've done,[S02] of course,[S02] is Saco's Climate Adaptation and Action Plan,[S02] which I hope you've all seen. That was a very specific effort for Saco,[S02] which kind of takes some of the same principles of that Climate Ready Coast,[S02] but identifies specifically what Saco is facing and what the right adaptation measures are for Saco. So that included multiple rounds of engagement,[S02] and the actions that are all in that plan have community feedback and buy-in. And then,[S02] most recently,[S02] S.[S02] M.[S02] P.[S02] D.[S02] C.[S02] was successful in receiving a grant from the state to cook up the Southern Maine Regional Coordinator Program,[S02] which is some,[S02] is basically funding for work that we have been doing,[S02] enabling us to support communities who are enrolled in the Community Resilience Partnership,[S02] which Saco is,[S02] and you've been successful in receiving a couple of community action grants through that program,[S02] but this grant allows our team to provide any kinds of technical assistance,[S02] grant writing support, community engagement support for communities like yourselves that are in that program. So I know that we just threw tons of our random little programs and projects at you, but we wanted to give you a real sense and kind of broad scope of the different things that S.[S02] M.[S02] P.[S02] D.[S02] C.[S02] is ingrained in,[S02] and there's much more also,[S02] so please,[S02] we're welcome, we'll be here for a few more minutes if you guys have questions,[S02] and our contact information is here,[S02] and I put a couple website links in there as well,[S02] if you want to do some research on your own.
Great,[S01] thank you so much. Board members,[S01] any questions for Ms.[S01] Young or Mr.[S01] Rather here,[S01] or thoughts? Jeff?
Thank you,[S04] Mr.[S04] Chair. Yeah,[S04] so obviously,[S04] a lot of great,[S04] great work that's taking place,[S04] and funding of ideas and,[S04] and actions,[S04] I guess. My question would be,[S04] though,[S04] is you're,[S04] you're,[S04] you're able to channel and fund a lot of this money,[S04] you know,[S04] and help individual towns get grants,[S04] like particularly the,[S04] the bike and pedestrian type action stuff,[S04] right? That's great,[S04] so now we have stronger,[S04] more vibrant communities that form these committees that help review how they might be able to do things within their town. Is there any way that you could kind of help be the mediator and get some training for, like,[S04] the Public Works Departments in the town,[S04] so that some of these conceptual ideas that are implemented are actually in compliance,[S04] like with federal traffic control devices? So we don't have these,[S04] you know,[S04] great concepts,[S04] and we shift our,[S04] our lanes over, and we have now a perception of an additional lane that's actually a bike lane and,[S04] and parking,[S04] or these Willywhacker posts that are just popping up in the middle of traffic lanes,[S04] because we've now created a problem by lane shifts? Is there a way that we could try to mitigate,[S04] or at least have training for,[S04] maybe we have a sign department at Public Works,[S04] that they are certified in the manual of uniform traffic control devices,[S04] so they can say,[S04] hey,[S04] 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 great idea,[S04] committee,[S04] but we can't implement what you're asking,[S04] because it's a violation of these standards,[S04] right? The signs are placed too close to the intersection and the,[S04] the line of sight,[S04] right? On Planning Board,[S04] we're very focused on line of sights,[S04] and yet,[S04] now we're putting all these advisory signs right in the line of sight for maybe truck heights or vehicles. So if we could try to calm some of all the individual directions,[S04] right? Which is great that you have all these programs,[S04] and towns are implementing that,[S04] but we need to kind of keep some consistency for safety purposes as well. So,[S04] I was just wondering if maybe you could take some of that attention and funding to, yes,[S04] let's,[S04] let's do a conceptual study and figure out how we can make an additional bike corridor,[S04] how can we make it safe and compliant with existing federal standards, right? Where we don't have different colored crosswalks,[S04] and we don't have signs that are too close to our traffic signals,[S04] they're supposed to be maintained clear spaces,[S04] right? So,[S04] what can we do to help educate where maybe it can be regulated a little bit more in each town,[S04] but provide them the training they need to say,[S04] hey,[S04] nice idea,[S04] but we can't do it,[S04] because it's non-compliant,[S04] right? Or we need to find another alternative. I think that would be beneficial than just having all these conceptual ideas that get thrown out,[S04] and let,[S04] let's see if it works.
Yeah.
Then,[S04] the second thing was,[S04] you,[S04] you touched on Then, the second thing was, you touched on affordable housing and record-keeping, and we've had, you know, not as many as I think the city would like, but we've had a couple proposals for affordable housing before us, and as a board, we're oftentimes looking at basically what you touched on, making sure, how do we have a mechanism that we can make sure that the occupants are meeting the requirement, the criteria, to remain in there year after year? We have a fantastic planning staff, right, and they usually step right up and say, yep, we can continue to do those audits, but I just see that as another task that's going to be on their annual rolodex of tasks that they have to do behind the scenes, right? In this record-keeping, in this auditing, and we do it with, you know, Public Works and stormwater inspections, right? So we're adding more and more tasks to our staffs. What can you do if we are to truly pursue this affordable housing? Granted, it's a need, but it has this underlying detrimental effect in some regards to our staff's capacity, right? Because we're asking them to monitor this. Can you get grants that would help provide an additional staff member who would be able to do that on a part-time basis, right? Something to help offset the burden of the city, if you will, for maintaining those sorts of programs where there's going to be continued auditing by a staff member? Because that is part of what our entire community has to pay for, and we're taking very talented staff members to go ahead and have to do that kind of record-keeping. So hopefully, maybe we could think about something along those lines. I guess I always have this one about the utilities and their energy reliability, it's kind of one of my fields, but it's, you're asking two things. It's like, yeah, you're taking money to do this resilient audit that the utility companies are doing anyways with a lot of their upgrades in their SCADA system, but on the other side, you're saying, hey, let's electrify and make our communities green, let's help these communities buy electric buses and electric vehicles, and you're adding to the grid demands, right? That's stressing. So you're creating stress on one hand, and yet you're asking for resiliency on the other hand, but you're not giving the utility companies time to plan for and construct and upgrade what they need to do to maintain their normal standards. So that is kind of, where's the priority? Are we looking to truly benefit our existing citizens and taxpayers and give them a more resilient grid and opportunities for the utility company to provide that? Then that's a great mission, right? We all would love to have more guarantee that our lights would be on, but we ought to need to slow down the pace, maybe, of the conversion of the additional load that we're asking with housing, electrification, right? So it's like, yeah, you guys are having two programs going, but they're, behind the scenes, they're counteractive to one another. So how do we very carefully weigh that out and make it beneficial for both parties? I think that's an important piece that we all like to have to feel good, and yes, we're becoming greener, we're now electrified, but we're putting stress on another system that wasn't intended for that rate of growth. They have a plotted line of their anticipated rate of growth, and by forcing the electrification, you're changing that curve much deeper.
Yeah. I'd like to respond to some of those if I can, and I'm going to try in order, if possible, but...
Yeah, if you could.
The bike ped stuff, I think, as James mentioned, we have some interesting overlapping boundaries in terms of who is doing what transportation work in Saco. I think, I'm not exactly familiar, neither James or I are transportation experts, exactly what those projects are that you're talking about, but I 100% agree with the point that you're making, right? That like, especially in transportation, there are so many different players that that collaboration, that communication is very important. I think our transportation people would agree, and I think they would be happy to talk with you more about that if you wanted to speak with them. As for the affordable housing piece, that tracking, that is the, these laws that keep coming to the state legislature and keep getting passed, we 100% recognize the fact that they are adding administrative burden to our municipalities, right? That is, of course, they have their pros and cons, but that was the impetus for that grant project, was to try and understand if there was a way that we could, at a regional level, take on that burden for your planning staff, right? There's got to be efficiencies of scale in some way there. And so we're hoping that that project does answer that question, to say, what is it that we could do and what would the funding mechanism be? I think currently, there isn't a funding mechanism at the state level that could fund a part-time staff person like you're talking about. That's part of the problem that we're trying to communicate to them, to that state level, is that there are lots of these mandates and added burdens that you're giving to municipalities. What is going to be the funding mechanism to support them or support us in helping them, right, make that happen? Because, of course, we all have that shared goal of seeing affordable housing continue, right? And then lastly, on the resiliency front, I think your point about the contradicting is very, very well taken. And again, the reason that we proposed that project to the EDA, and I think the reason it was funded was, that was part of our argument, is we've been encouraging municipalities to go electric, right? We've been, the entire sort of sustainability industry has been encouraging people to go electric, right? Well, what's the flip side of that? We understand that Maine's energy grid is not ready for that. And so I think this plan, and maybe, James, you could speak to it a little bit more, is trying to answer the questions that CMP and those energy provider plans are not answering, which is, what can we be doing at a municipal level or for businesses? How can we support businesses in making sure that they're set up on their end to be resilient to those power outages and those changes? So I think that they're complementary, and CMP has been a partner on that project and provided a lot of the information and a lot of their planning to go along with what we've been doing. Do you have anything else you want to add, James?
I think you captured it pretty well, Reagan. Yeah, our project isn't, it's not intended to supplant anything CMP is already doing with their system. Should note that we are working also with Kenny McLight and Power, so it's actually two systems that serve our region. It's not intended to supplant what CMP is doing, and there are conversations that we've had that don't necessarily live in the CMP space. For example, we met with the Governor's Energy Office, who work very closely with the Public Utilities Commission at the state level, and so there's regulatory side pieces to this that don't involve the folks who are, you know, turning on your, making sure your lights turn on every day, that they're more on the regulatory side. But I think Reagan's point is, was very well spoken, that we acknowledge that there's a bit of a, one hand has to talk to the other as we're doing this, otherwise it doesn't quite make much sense. But I think that the end result will be, there is a data set that we've created through this project that didn't actually exist anywhere else focusing on our region, that gathering some of the data on what are the segments of the system that extend from, say, one rural part of our region to the other, like, say, between Leamington and Parsons Field, and why are the outages out there so much more acute than they are in coastal Maine? And coming up with some metrics for what constitutes an acceptable amount of outage hours, like, there is some element of triage almost to it, because you're going to, we're going to get some level of outages, and it's like, well, how can we minimize it and make sure that when it does happen that the impacts are, the less, the lower is that they can be, if that makes sense.
Any other thoughts from board members? No, this is, this is all great. One thought I had was sort of in relationship to what Jeff had asked, was sort of the training and, you know, the work that, that not only Planning Board members and boards across all the municipalities can gather, but more specifically to a lot of these laws that are going through the state. There's a lot of, there's a lot happening all at once, there's some confusion, of course, it affects each municipality a little bit differently in how we can try to proactively, you know, get ahead and not be reactive on it, because there's, I know in Saco here, we feel like we've made good strides forward, and perhaps some of these, you know, some of these LDs going through are, just puts a little bit of a wrench into it, of course. So any training, simply any training coming soon that...
Yeah.
...what everyone can participate in, and I think to Jeff's point, a lot of staff members as well, across the board, not just Saco, but for everyone, I think would be greatly beneficial.
Yeah. I hear you on the LDs and the state, the new state changes. I think you're definitely not alone in our region. I think a lot of towns had been sort of taking it upon themselves to start making these changes that they felt were reducing barriers to housing, right? And then the states coming in and adding to those, or maybe contradicting those in some cases. In terms of trainings specifically for laws that have come out out of the most recent legislature, we are planning on hosting a webinar at the end of October that's going to address LD 1829, which I think you're going to get a lot of that tonight, which is great. And I would always encourage that boards get some legal counsel advice around these as well, right? But the, we're going to talk about that, and we're also going to talk about a handful of other laws that are similar to 1829 or have similar types of changes in them. And we've also launched a new webpage on our website for legislative tracking, where we've included those, as well as a list of other laws that we're kind of watching to see what the rulemaking will be, whether or not there's going to be direct impacts to municipalities on those. I will say, we're wrapping our heads around it in the same way you are, you know, we try and follow these as they go through the legislature, but it's a very specific skillset that it requires in order to be able to follow that fire hose. So I think, you know, there's always an aspect of being reactive to these things because the state laws just move at a pace, yeah.
Sure. Well, that's, that's good, that's exciting to see that we can all learn more together, and it'll be good. The last thought I had was with the Energy Resilience Plan, excuse me, with that and, within that information that you're gathering, is there going to be information that we can understand how solar comes into play and how that affects whether there are large solar farms, or if municipalities encourage more solar within each project, whether small or large, and I don't want to say that municipality starts saying you must, once you hit a certain size, or maybe that's where, that's where we go, but sort of information like that, or recommendations, that if there were, you know, X percent more solar, then that would help, you know, reduce some of this. And it's, of course, there's the solar that's going back into the system or versus solar that's captured onsite in a battery backup system type of thing, but understanding how that comes into play.
That's a great point, Chair, and, yes, we are thinking of that as we work to develop our recommendations. So we're past the existing conditions analysis stage and more like the coming up with policies and strategies for the plan itself, but one of the things we're looking at is providing some material that could help with the development of microgrids, so for a particular development, that you could have several development sites or several, like a cluster of new developments that all are sharing some battery storage capability or small-scale solar, and that therefore are able to kind of be a little bit grid-independent, and that they're not as dependent on CMP system in the event of an outage. They have, they have something there that's also kind of augmenting their power capability. So yes, we are absolutely thinking of that.
Great. Any other thoughts from board members, questions? Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess just as you guys touched on some of the LD laws and how we're struggling with it, I don't know if it's appropriate, or has, have any of the legislatures ever reached out to you? Because you guys don't really have, have, you know, a dog in the race, right? You're an advisory committee, but you see what each one of these 37 towns that you work with, right? You see the struggles that we're going through, you see them trying to make changes, trying to modify their zoning, and do they ever ask you, really, what is the implication of some of these laws? I mean, because you guys are, you know, you're much, much closer to having your fingers on the pulse of what's going on in this area, and how it could have some pretty adverse effects from what the legislatures might think that they're voting on? Or is that kind of like a taboo conflict of interest? I mean, obviously, you can't go advocating or lobbying for them, but do they know that you even exist to be a resource to bounce these ideas off them as a consultant?
Yeah. It's a good, it's a great question, and you do touch on, you know, something that's sort of key to our, you know, formation and our mission, right, is whether or not we are advocating for these things. And you're right, we don't, we remain nonpartisan. But the answer to your other question, do they reach out? Yes, they absolutely do. We do have regular meetings with lots of the different legislatures that are, that are in your county, and actually, many of them also serve on the Housing and Economic Development Committee, Transportation Committee, you know, these, these groups that are really pushing these through. We also have representation on the Maine Association of Planners, and they're very close to it, and often get feedback and sort of go back and forth with legislators on law language, you know? So we definitely put our voice out there when we feel like it is very specific to, you know, when we know something that they don't, right? Trying to share how this is going to impact communities, and I think that's, that's how we stay involved, as opposed to advocating for one thing over the other, really. But I think, yes, we've, we've made our attempts and do try and stay in regular contact with legislatures to help them understand what we think are the impacts of these, yeah.
Any other thoughts, questions for board members? Well, great, this was, this was great. This was...
Thank you so much for having us, yeah.
Good discussion, good presentation, really appreciate it.
Our inboxes are open, feel free to reach out anytime. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Good to see you, James.
You too, Chair.
So I believe in continuing our training this evening, we have a little bit of a presentation here from Mr. Phil Saucier from Bernstein Sheriff, whenever he's ready, I think he's our next on the podium.
Good evening, thanks for having me again. My name is Phil Saucier, I'm a municipal attorney with Bernstein Shore, and I assist the city from time to time with various matters. I was, I actually just gave this training back in February, so it may sound duplicative for some of you, I understand there are a couple new members on the board, so I'm going to try not to dwell on some of the sort of main points I've done before, but I was asked to give this again. I just heard that you may be receiving an LD 1829 training from me, I was not prepared to do that, that was not what I was going to do. I have given, I have spoken about that on multiple occasions already, though, so I can just off the top of my head give you the highlights of that, but I understand you will have a more in-depth training by S and PDC, or they're going to be giving one, at least, that you could attend in the future. So I will, I will just give a high-level version of that so you understand what's coming, but forgive me if I get a few details wrong on that. So first, I'm just going to go over some general powers and duties, what your roles are here on the Planning Board, and then I'm going to just quickly hit upon some, some general sort of tips and tricks that I've sort of, I like to bring up when I do a board training about conducting the public's business. And then I'm going to talk about conflicts of interest and Freedom of Access Act, which again, for some of you will be, will be not new, but Planning Board members are required to have Freedom of Access Act training FOA, so this will qualify as your training. And I think, and I think that's it, but what I'll do is I'll wait and I'll answer any questions, I know this board always has questions, and I'm always happy to engage in them. So first, just as a general matter, what is your role, and what is in the city itself? I like to kind of lay that out. So there's sort of three different bodies, if you will, within city government that deal with land use matters, and you all have very distinctive roles under the, under both state law and your local ordinances. So the first, the City Council, City Council does have a role, but it's limited. One of their roles is to adopt the ordinances that you guys are going to apply, and so that, that's your legislative body in Saco, some towns have a town meeting for a government, you have a City Council for a government, so they will adopt the ordinances in the comprehensive plan. They also have a role in adopting contract zones, you might hear about that from time to time, so that's a form of zoning, it's a quasi-judicial action that they do, that they have. And that's, that's when the zoning ordinance is amended to allow particular types of uses or dimensional standards that may not be otherwise allowed in that underlying zone. There are certain standards that projects have to meet, but that's allowed under Maine law and your ordinance, so they will have that role from time to time, and the Planning Board has a joint role in some ways. You will recommend or not recommend such a zone, and then you will also ultimately review any site plan related to the project that that developer's asking for the, for the contract zone. And then finally, the City Council has a role by appointing you guys, right? So that's one of their jobs, is to point you, and then you, and then you go about your business under the ordinance. The other body is the Zoning Board of Appeals, and under state law, there is a state law for Boards of Appeals, unlike Planning Boards. Planning Boards are really more a creature of municipalities, interestingly enough. Boards of Appeals are, there's a statute that regulates Boards of Appeals, and they're... that regulates boards of appeals, and they're required if a municipality has a zoning ordinance. So they're one of the requirements. The board has certain roles, including administrative review. So if they're in Saco, that's limited to reviews from the decisions of the code enforcement officer. So someone wants to appeal a decision of a building permit, notice of violation, those kinds of things. Grant variances, only the planning board can grant a variance from the zoning ordinance. That means dimensional standards, right? So, and there's very particulars, and municipalities can limit that, but that's essentially setbacks, things like that, if you think about that. So when one wants a variant, variance from those procedures, they go to the planning board, I mean, sorry, the zoning board. The planning board does not have the authority to waive those dimensional standards, and that's, again, a state law requirement. Variances are by design difficult to achieve, fairly exacting standards that the zoning board has to apply. The idea being, of course, that the goal of zoning is to bring land more into compliance instead of less in compliance over time. But our legislators had the foresight to understand we sometimes need a safety release valve from time to time. There's certain projects, certain lots, that may qualify even under the hard standards to get a zoning, to get a zoning variance. And then finally, there's the planning board, and that's your role. You have a few duties under, just a few duties under state law. You're the municipal reviewing authority for subdivision approval. And you conduct public hearings on proposals for zoning ordinance amendments under state law. And that literally is just a requirement to hold that hearing. Your local ordinance can require you to do other things like recommend or not recommend that ordinance amendment, for example. Under your ordinance, you're given some other authorities. One is you review conditional use applications. You, and I think this is probably where you spend most of your time, site plan review. So that's the set of standards that the city has decided apply to various development proposals. You'll go through those and apply those standards to the applications. Shoreland zoning, you have a role under certain applications in shoreline zoning. And then, and then in sort of unique to Saco, master planned development. That's not in every community, but that's something that you have. So you'll review master plan developments. And the appeals of your decision will go directly to Superior Court. So someone who's, who is an aggrieved party and qualifies for standing can appeal your decision to Superior Court within 30 days of your decision. Briefly, how can someone appear for you, before you, what I, well, not what I call, what the courts call standing, to be an applicant? Well, first, the party has to have right, title, and interest. What that means is, and the courts have interpreted that to mean, a legally cognizable expectation of having the power to use the property in the ways that would be authorized by the permit if approved. So if someone's asking for approval for something from you, and they have the authority to use it in that way. A title dispute does not necessarily, or not automatically deprive a person of standing. So you are not a title court, as I've often said. Some, you know, sometimes you're asked to be that. And what I often say, if I'm serving as a municipal attorney, is you have, you have neither the authority nor the jurisdiction to do so. Only a court of competent jurisdiction can do that. In the work you're doing, you may hear about title disputes from time to time. But what your job is to do, and you may need, you may need an opinion from your municipal attorney on this. Someone has a deed to the land, someone has a purchase and sale agreement, someone has an option contract, someone has a lease. There are various forms of right to interest that would qualify essentially. Does that person have the right to use the land in the way they're asking you for permission to do so? That's what you're going to look at. You, you won't need to deal with this very much, but just so you understand that there's a slightly different standing requirement for an appeal of your decisions. So if someone, you make a decision, someone wants to appeal your decision to Superior Court, first, that person has to have actually participated in your proceeding. So say in a butter, for example, can't appeal if they never showed up and participated. But also, it can't be from any member of the public. It has to be what a particularized injury is what the courts have said. That means your actual use or enjoyment of your property will be potentially adversely affected by that permit. That typically means a butters. And that, the term a butter is typically defined within your ordinances, or if not, there's some, there's some, some court cases that have helped us figure that out. But typically, if, you know, if a butter's defined as 500 feet, that will generally be standing, enough for standing. It's not just members of the public. In fact, there's a case from a long time ago where one of the justices of the Maine Supreme Court said, "We do not have drive-by standing in the state." And in that case, someone who drove by a particular project on their way to work every day did not like that project, and they appealed. And that was not enough to meet the standings. It's, you've got an actual, be a butter that would be affected. Your property would be affected. Another sort of final sort of piece on this part of my presentation is about your written decisions. Written decisions are very, not only are they required by your ordinance and by the Freedom of Access Act, but they're very important for members of the public, for the applicant, and maybe even most importantly, if it gets appealed to the court. The courts have said you have to have detailed findings of fact and conclusions of law, go through each of your standards, say why you made a decision, even if it's a sentence or two, some indication on why you came up with your decision. You are very lucky in this city to have very competent planning staff, and they help you with that. Ultimately, it has to be your decision. I know there's confusion sometimes around that. Staff will prepare draft findings based on some of the, either what they heard from the board, or if they're just factual in nature, they'll provide it for you. But ultimately, it's your decision. So you'll go through each of the criteria, you'll review it. If there's draft findings in front of you, you make sure you agree with that, make adjustments, and then adopt it. And then there's no more reason that a case gets remanded back down to you than that the findings were not sufficient. That happens frequently on appeals, and that just ends up delaying and costing everybody money and time. So it's important to, it doesn't mean that you're going to get your decision right. The courts will decide if you got it right ultimately. But it's good to let everyone know why you made your decision. That's important to the process for people to understand what you did and for the court to actually review what you did. Just a couple of tune-up, generally, sort of moving along on a sort of general theme, tune-up themes I like to hear, and some of you have heard this before. But, you know, serving on a board, I personally serve on a board now, and I've served on other public boards previously. Good things to remember, particularly, I think, in this day and age where it's so important to have people participate in municipal government and to get volunteers to do the job that you guys are doing. It's a difficult job. I think most of you do it because you care about your municipality and you also think you have something to offer. And what I always think about is that you're, the public also has a trust that you are going to do that job well for them. And one of the ways, there's a couple of ways to make sure that people know that you're doing that. And one of them is that you serve in an impartial, unbiased, and civil manner. It goes a long ways, and you guys do do this, I've watched a number of meetings, is to be civil with both yourselves but also members of the public. That goes a long ways for having people engendered trust in what you're, what you're doing. And decorum to the process is also important, right? So not speaking over people, not, not, not following the rules of procedure. You guys have standard operating procedures as well. It's good to follow those. It can seem, sometimes seem a little technical, but it does bring order to the process and let people understand that this is not a chaotic proceeding, but instead, there's, there's a reason why you're doing it, and you're going through this process. It's always good to remember, I'm going to get into this a little bit more detail, but all of your meetings are subject to the FOA standards. That means these are open. People can come in and walk in. Right now, they can record us if they want to under Maine's FOA. So that's important to know. You, you can have reasonable limits on people's speaking opportunities. So if there's an opportunity to speak, and there are not always opportunities to speak, right? So under FOA, even though these meetings are open to the public, doesn't mean everyone can speak. People can only speak if there's a public hearing portion or a public comment portion. And then they can come up, and then you can have reasonable limits on that, three, five minutes, it depends on the board, and ensure that people stay on topic, right? If they're there for a particular application, please speak about that application. That said, I think there's some deference that should be made from time to time to allow people to speak, within reason. You can't have, I mean, you do have to do your business. You do have to do the business of the board, so you can't have that go on all night. But sometimes if people need just a couple extra seconds, it's good to sort of defer to that, make sure people feel like they were heard, and that they got, they had an opportunity to say what they wanted to say. Everything has to be done on the record. Again, that's, I'm going to get into that a little with FOA. That means you shouldn't be sort of polling each other behind the scenes or talking about the applications. Public has the right, under the Freedom of Access Act, to hear and see essentially what you're thinking in real time. How is, how are these people coming to their decisions? What information do they have in front of them? And how are they going to decide the case based on the information in front of them? That means you shouldn't also be doing your own research. This is one of those topics that confuses people from time to time. It doesn't mean that you can't bring your own personal background to your jobs. You are who you are. You were probably chosen because you had a particular background or skillset. It's good to have a good variety of people. So if you're an engineer, you can't not be an engineer when you're looking at the engineering plans, right? That's not what that means. What it means is you shouldn't be going and then doing, testing out those theories in your, in your home office and figuring it out, right? You shouldn't be doing site visits on your own and exploring around the site outside of a regularly scheduled public site visit. If you do that, your decision, and someone finds out that your decision could be overturned. And that has happened in some cases. The reason why, because that's, that's a due process consideration. What that means is that you have some information that other people, the public, may not, and particularly the applicant. The applicant has a right to know what information you're looking at. They provide it. Members of the public provide it through testimony, and you all get to see the same thing. So if you're doing your own research, you're going out there, you're, you're bringing some information to yourself that the other person didn't have a chance to rebut or understand or provide additional information for. So that's just something to keep in mind. You guys know this as well, but I like to remind you, is that in serving on this board, your job is to apply the ordinance and laws as it is, even if you don't like it. You can seek to revise the laws, and your role is of sort of recommending ordinance amendments and things like that. But the law is the law, and your job is to apply it. If you feel like you can't apply it because you simply do not agree with it, or you have some sort of bias against that provision, you should recuse yourself. And I'll get into that a little bit more in the conflicts of interest. And then sort of finally, as you know, you serve under an oath of office. We expect everyone to be models of sincerity and honesty. We are all humans at the end of the day. We do our best. And it's hard to be on the firing line, and I, you know, some applications can have a lot of attention. There's a lot of emotion around that, and that can be difficult. However, it's still always important to remain civil. And when people feel like they're disrespected, that often will lead to consternation in the community, but also appeals, more importantly, what I'm talking about. Sometimes people didn't feel like they got their point across and didn't have sort of respect in the process, and that could lead to more, you know, someone say, "I'm going to appeal that decision because I didn't feel like they went through the process." So it's always good to keep that in mind when you're doing your work. Part of it is engendering trust in your, in what you're doing in the community. I'm going to switch quickly now to conflicts of interest. That sort of leads into that discussion. Again, I'm not, you guys have printouts of my stuff, but I'm not putting it on the screen tonight, partly because I don't have a, I didn't bring my laptop, and I think it was necessary. But so the general rule in main law, there is a, conflicts is a, is a topic that comes up quite frequently. But there actually is a sort of black letter law. What is a conflict of interest? Well, under main law, under the municipal titles of main law in particular, so this applies specifically to boards like you, there's a black letter law that essentially we call the 10% test. It's when you're self-interested in an application in front of you. And specifically, what you look at is if, if a company, for example, is applying for an application in front of you, you have a sort of black letter law conflict of interest if you're a officer, director, partner, associate, or stockholder of that entity, which is the subject of issue before the board, and you are either directly or indirectly the owner of at least 10% of the stock of that private corporation or 10% of the interest in that entity. That's, that's just a per se conflict. The grayer area is what if you don't meet that specific test, right? You may not be an officer, but you're, you're an employee, or you own 5% of the company, right? That becomes something we call a potential sort of appearance of conflict. And that same statute says you should avoid the appearance of any conflict of interest. And the way you do that is if you somehow are, you don't meet that sort of statutory test, but you have some relationship to that applicant, you have to ask yourself a couple questions. One is, can you be, participate without bias, predisposition, or letting any of your feelings or relationship impact your decision? And can you apply the ordinances and the laws to the, to the proceedings with the best relevant standards and your best judgment? If the answer is no, you should recuse yourself. If you think the answer is yes, and it's, and often is, we all live in, Maine is a bunch of small towns. We end up knowing people. We end up doing business with a lot of people. We go to school with a lot of people. None of those necessarily disqualify you. But you should disclose it, disclose that relationship. You say publicly on the record why you think, if this is true, that you can sit in an unbiased manner. You don't have the same kind of relationship to this that you will have any kind of personal gain or effect, and you like to sit. And then you would actually have the board vote on whether they agree or not agree to let you sit. That's the proper. So it's disclose and vote in those situations. Sometimes someone in, in the proceeding will raise that as well. And so they can raise it and go through that same analysis. You still should sit if you don't have a conflict. Your job is to hear applications. But if you do have a conflict, meaning either the 10% test or an appearance of a conflict or some sort of bias or predisposition, you should step down. And oftentimes, that's, you have to ask yourself that question. We can't see inside your own head, right? So that's what I always say, like, you need to think about whether you really can be biased. There's a couple obvious ones there, too. I always use this example. Project comes to town, you sign a petition against it. Then they're in front of you. Like, that's, you should just step down. Like, your name is on something saying, "I don't want it." And even if you now have had a change of heart, someone could rationally argue that you are biased, right? You don't want that project, and maybe you wouldn't be able to, to apply the standards in a fair way. The consequences, if you don't step down, and then someone raises it in an appeal, the court did find that there was a conflict, is that decision could be voided. There are also bias based on relationships, I just want to point out. So in addition to sort of the business and other kind of relationship tests, there's also sort of a per se bias, which you should step down for family relationships. And that's, and that's defined as essentially second cousins inclusive, both on your married and blood side. So that's the official term, which I, I was just asked to define it earlier this week. I like to say it. The only time I ever see it is when I give this training and in first-year Trust and Estates class. It's this, it's when you're involving a relative by consanguinity or affinity. So consanguinity is blood, and affinity is marriage, within second cousins inclusive. Just think about that. So, yeah.
I'm sorry, but we used to always use that sixth degree as that chart.
Sixth degree, yeah.
So that, that is still the same. It's just different terminology that we
Yeah, sort of a shorthand version of saying that is sixth cousin, second cousin inclusive. Consequency or affinity within the sixth degree is sort of per se bias. You should step down. Any questions about conflicts?
Phil, does, does that apply to butters or opponents to a particular application as well? If, if you have a relative who is showing up and is opposed to a particular proposal or an application, that would cause that board member to need to recuse himself as well?
It's a good question. Not necessarily, but potentially. The reason why I say that is the sort of familial bias provision applies to your relationship to the applicant. So you're, because you're making a decision on that application. But I do think in that instance, it could potentially raise an appearance of a conflict, right? That someone you're related to does not like the project. Again, that doesn't mean that you can't be unbiased. We all have relatives we don't agree with all the time, right? So that doesn't necessarily mean that. But I think you probably should go through that analysis again and publicly just to let everyone know, Bob is my cousin. I haven't talked to Bob about this particular project. I still think, you know, obviously, he has an opinion. I think I can sit here in an unbiased way, if you feel that way, and then have a discussion and a vote. So it's, it's a good thing to raise, but it doesn't, in my view at least, it's not a per se conflict. Yeah.
Just kind of one question, because Jim brings up a good point. So it's always been pretty clear if we, if we think there's a conflict, to disclose, and if we recuse ourselves, to get up and go sit in the audience. And typically, the MMA manual is saying that we shouldn't even participate in public comment at that point. We should just be quiet, neutral, and sit there, correct?
Yeah.
I mean, because we could sway the board by our appearance acting as a person. But when, he brought up the point of a butters, what, what about the scenario? What, what about the scenario where an application's coming before you against a property that we may own, which would create a conflict, and we should recuse ourselves? But does that mean that we automatically give up our rights as a citizen to speak, to address the board? That's, you know, I think I've witnessed a couple where they said, "I would like to retain my right to speak. I'm recusing myself, but I'll retain my right to speak with regards to this topic." And maybe it wasn't necessarily direct abutting, but how, what's your view on that? I mean, it doesn't look like they're good optics, right? Because now you have a board member who's recused themselves, but they're still trying to have their voice heard. But I think it's kind of sometimes they're right if it's an application. What would be your advice in that situation where it's a direct abutting project to a parcel you own?
So I don't agree that planning board members can't speak as members of the public. There is actually a law court case, relatively recent law court case on point out of the town of Wiscasset, within the last, time is starting to go faster for me. I can't, it seems like it was two years ago, it may have been 10, somewhere within the last 10 years. That essentially said, planning board members have a right to participate in their government like everybody else, right? If, if there was a rule that you couldn't participate, that means you could never apply for a subdivision, for example. You can never apply for a site plan approval. You could never speak out against a project. That's a little, I agree, the optics are a little bit different when you're applying for something versus speaking, but I still believe there's a First Amendment right to do so. I think that would be upheld by the courts of challenge. That said, I think you have to make very clear what your role you're standing in front of the podium in. So in that situation, clearly you would have already recused yourself. You would have stepped down. You would have come around to the other side, and then if you felt the need, if you were moved to speak, you would, you would say you're speaking in your personal capacity. You're obviously, you recused yourself, and you can do so. I do think you have the right to do that. What you should not do, and this could get you in trouble, is then try to influence that vote in some way. And I don't know if this was in a case or as an anecdote, but one of the, my former partners who's retired said, you know, one case that was, he remembered that was raised was someone was trying to sort of, you know, the head nod and the, looking at the members from his seat once. And that, and you're trying to sort of, you know, signal how to vote or something like that, or something. That, you should not be doing that. You're now just a member of the public, right? So that's my answer to that. I think you do have the right, but you have to be very clear on what your role is.
And this, this is very similar to the conversations we've had in the direction of if we're, if board members are at a council meeting or any other sort of meeting, that absolutely free to speak, but as long as we disclose that we're not speaking on behalf of the planning board or as a board member, but as a resident for.
Right.
You know, whatever topic of discussion. So I think it's similar to that context.
It's very similar to that, yeah. All right. The final topic, and then again, and then I'll do a quick review of LD 1829 from memory, is your FOA training. So just a very general, I'll take five to 10 minutes on this. And I do encourage you to go and read the law. The state FOA, alms budsmen, it's a hard word for me to say, has a website that has an FAQ on it. That FAQ, reading that actually qualifies as your training as well, so I think it's just good to kind of skim that. There's some questions and some FAQs. So I encourage you to do that if you have any further questions. But in general, the Free of Access Law is Maine's sort of open government law. You sometimes see it in the federal, it's FOIA. It's one of my pet peeves, and people write it that way because I practice FOA law. People, in federal government, it's FOIA. In this, because we have a Free of Access Law. The law is, and this is in statute, is liberally construed and applied to promote its underlying purposes, which is that, and again, from statute, that public proceedings exist to aid in the conduct of people's business. It's the intent of the legislature that their actions be taken openly, and that the records of their actions be open to public inspection, and their deliberations be conducted openly. So that's what we start with, a sort of purpose statement of that law. And then it's broken up into essentially two categories: public proceedings, which are meetings, and public records or documents. Public proceedings are what we're doing right now. So anytime a body of the government comes together to meet, it's a public proceeding. It's a board, I should say, more specifically, a board, commission, agency, authority of any county, municipality, school district, or other regional government. So that would be official boards. It does not apply to like staff meetings, for example. It applies to boards that are appointed or elected. The general rule is that the proceedings are open to the public. People can come in unless you fall within one of the executive session statutes, which I'll go over in a second. Some of the other examples are, the other example, I should say, there are some other examples that do not apply to you, are like poverty abatements, for example, if the council is receiving those. So there's some statutory exemptions to public proceedings. But the one, the only one that will apply to you, and only rarely, will be executive Communications outside of a public meeting, it does not prohibit communications outside of that meeting unless it's used to defeat the purposes of FOA. So that would be, for example, discussing the substance of the applications that are in front of you with fellow board members. You can use it for things like quorum calls and sending out, sending out agendas and information requests and things like that. But if you start to discuss on, on topics on email or any other kind of, you know, medium with three or more of you, that's considered a meeting, and it'll be improperly noticed, and people won't be able to see it, and you're not part of that email chain. So you should avoid those kind of discussions. Those are some of the common violations that you'll see. There is a record required of your meetings. It's actually a lot less than you would think, so minutes are not, and I reviewed this with you in more detail last time because there was a specific question at that time. Full minutes are not required by FOA, just a simple record. And what that record needs to show is the date, time, and place of your meeting, the members that were present and absent, and then any motions and votes taken by a member if there's a roll call. And even audio and video actually satisfies that requirement. So those are the basics, and that's just to know exactly what you did. Some municipalities, and I'd say by practice most, will do some form of minutes, which has a little more detail than that. So the topic, you know, the various discussion items, sometimes even a summary of what was said, that can happen. Again, I mentioned this earlier, people have the right to attend your meetings. They can also record your meetings, as long as they're not interfering with your business. You can have some reasonable rules governing behavior with these, with these meetings, but you have to allow people to attend. Executive sessions, so again, that's, this is the exception to the rule of public meetings, is you can go into executive session by motion of three fifths of the members, but only on the permitted items that are in the executive session statute, section 405. And I'm going to, for purposes of the training, just review them very briefly, but most of them will not apply to you. So one is essentially personnel matters, employment, appointment, assignment, duties, promotion, demotion, compensation, evaluation, discipline of employment matters, and complaints about employees. Certain school board suspensions of public school students, discussion of the consideration of use of real or personal property, or economic development. So that's, again, usually typically owned by a council if they're selling or buying property. You don't want to have those discussions all the time in public about what the price should be, should we sell it, should we not sell it? That would, that would affect your bargaining power. Also, economic development, so that's sometimes used to discuss at the beginning stages at least, certain TIF proposals, so people, developers may be sharing information that they don't want public about their business. Eventually, everything does have to be public, right? And, and I'll get into that in a second. Discussion of labor contracts can be in, can be in executive session. Consultations is where I come involved, consultations with the body and its attorney concerning the legal rights and duties of the body or agency, pending or contemplated litigation, settlement offers, and so forth. So that's the one time that sometimes planning boards will go into executive session. Typically, again, still the council is in charge of litigation generally. Like, if you, the appeal, if your decision is appealed, you're not actually the party, the city is. So the council will end up making litigation decisions. But sometimes cases are remanded back to you. Sometimes there's a legal question as you're, as you're deliberating that does require an executive session, so you may have an executive session from time to time. But I would say fairly rarely, because typically, even if there's a legal interpretation of the ordinance, oftentimes that's better to have in public anyway, so people know how you're applying that ordinance. It's really, I think, if there's litigation involved or a court remand, those kind of things, you may have, and I will have from time to time, executive sessions with planning Again, certain, certain, and this is, the FOA law likes to do this, and also any other section that like may be in statute that allows you to do so. Executive sessions can't be used to defeat the purpose of FOA. I mean, you can't say, and I do, this does happen, and I think it's more of a misunderstanding than others, like, there's maybe a sensitive topic, and a select board or a council wants to go into executive session, sometimes they just do, right? And, and, but that's not a, because it's sensitive is not a reason to go to executive session. You still have to fall within one of those proceedings. And if it's a legal issue, you have to have the attorney there. You can't just say it's a legal issue and we want to talk about it among ourselves. That specific one says the attorney, it's with the attorney. That's the other thing I see, see from time to time. It's one of the few attorney-client privileges we have as public sector lawyers. We have, we don't have as many of those provisions as you would as a private individual talking to your attorney, for example. You can't vote in executive session, so it's, you can discuss the issue at, but you can't vote. All votes have to be in public, so people understand what you're doing. And again, if you go into executive session, you have to cite this specific provision of why you're going into it, so the public knows. Your meetings have to be noticed. Again, you have very good and competent staff that are going to take care of this for you, but there needs to be public notice for any of your proceedings. It needs to be given an ample time to allow the public to attend and disseminate in a manner reasonably calculated to notify the general public of the meeting. There's no specific, if you notice, timing. Those are usually put on, at requirements at the local level. And if you have an emergency meeting, which you rarely will, you just have to notify the media at the same time that you're notifying each of the members that we're going to have a meeting. Again, that's usually a council that needs to meet emergency purposes. And then decisions, I mentioned this before, decisions, you have to have a written decision for every conditional approval or denial of an application, setting forth the reasons or reasons for your decision under, under FOA. And then the final section, final provision I want to talk about for meetings is that, this is a, this is a remnant of COVID, but you can have remote meetings now. That was not allowed before COVID. That's now in, that falls in the FOA statute. That's where that provision is. You can have, you can have remote meetings if you have a policy allowing you to do so. There are some rules around it. It's been broadened over the years since the original rules, so now it can be for any reason, if your policy allows it to be for any reason. But there, but you have to be able to, if you're going to use it for a member to participate, then members of the public have to be allowed to participate, too. That's if a member is participating remotely. And you have to make sure that the information that's in front of the board is available for everyone to see through, like on a link or something, so that people can access it. So you have to have a policy. The flip side is the public records part of FOA. So those are the documents, so everything in front of you likely, people can ask for a copy of it, if, and this is the important thing, it's in the possession of an official or a appointee and receive prepared or containing information relating to the transaction of public business. So people can't, if you have personal stuff, that's, that, just because you're on a board doesn't mean people can start looking through your files, right? It's only relates to the documents related to the transaction of public business, right? Which in your case would be planning board matters and applications in front of you. It applies to all written, printed, graphical, mechanical, electric, any kind of information you can see, right? Emails, that kind of thing. You start out with that general premise, but just like meetings, there's, are exceptions. Instead of executive sessions, there are called public record exceptions, and there's a list of them in this FOA, but unfortunately, unlike executive sessions, which are fairly discreet, it also says, and anytime it says confidential in all of the titles of main law, and those are scattered throughout, and honestly, there still is not a good list. The judiciary committee, the judicial committee does have a search engine, and they try to pull it together, but that's not even comprehensive. So you have to kind of know what, what is confidential. You have to sometimes have it researched. So I'll just give you some examples. So obviously personnel records, certain personnel records, poverty abatement records, force management plans, general assistance applications, certain juvenile records, certain police investigations, investigative records, I should say. Certain medical information, obviously credit or financial information that, that may be in a, in a communication from someone to their, to their elected official or constituent. There are some, there are exceptions added all the time. The legislature looks at those lists, and one of them, for example, a few years ago, is email addresses collected and used by a political subdivision to provide non-interactive notifications, updates, and cancellations are now confidential. There's usually a reason why exceptions get into place, and you know, someone may have been trying to grab those for various reasons. Someone didn't know they were opted, they were opted in to get information about the city of Saco, they didn't know that that was going to be a public document. On the other hand, if they write to you, that is public. Their email would be public. Anyone can make a FOA request, company, entity, corporation, association. You can't ask why. You can ask why, but they don't have to answer it. And it does not have to be in writing. Some towns like to have it in writing, and they'll gently suggest you fill out a form, but ultimately, if someone asks for something, you don't, you know, you could still be liable of violating the FOA request if you didn't process it. There's a process which, again, just for purpose of training, you guys will not have to do this, but the city, if it receives a FOA request, has to acknowledge that FOA request within five working days, and then provide a, an estimate of time and cost to, to fulfill that request within a reasonable amount of time. That request can, that, those fees can be $25 an hour after the first two hours of staff time, for time spent searching, retrieving, compiling, and redacting that information, and charge a reasonable fee for copying and mailing. If the estimate of cost is greater than $50, you have to notify the requester before proceeding. If it's more than $100, you can require a payment in advance. And then you can also require a payment, if you didn't have it in advance, you could have, require a payment before you hand over those documents. Because honestly, this, it's, it's, this is important, people should have the right to see it, but it also is a lot of work and time for staff to do these, to put these together, so it's reasonable to ask for some compensation. And the compensation, quite frankly, working with a lot of towns, does not cover the actual costs, even though it can get expensive for the requester. Any person can appeal a FOA decision to Superior Court. The burden's on the agency or public body to show that you did not violate FOA. You could be subject to penalties and attorney's fees. And then a willful violation of FOA is subject to a civil penalty of $500. You need to, every town has to have a public access officer, so your, your city would have one. I actually don't know who that is. Sometimes it's the city manager, sometimes it's the clerk, in my experience, but it's usually someone who already has a different role. Their job is to coordinate and consolidate those requests and reply and respond on their behalf. They would be the person you would likely hear from if there's a request for some of your documents. They would, you know, they would say, "Please search your files for anything related to this particular request." And then the final part of FOA is training, which I already mentioned. Certain public officials have to complete a FOA training with 120 days after they take their off, office, and that includes now planning boards. Planning boards were added a few years ago. It was, you were not one of the bodies that had to have training. And I think that's all I need to, the only thing I'd say is there are, it, it's good to watch these. Every year, the legislative judiciary committee does review the FOAs. There are tweaks to this law every single session, and that's partly because there is a Free of Access Act Committee, I guess you'd call it, that's appointed by statute, and their job is actually to continue to review the exceptions and everything on an annual basis. So they'll report out, it's called the Right to New Advisory Committee. They'll report out recommended edits, and sometimes they're just clarifying amendments, but sometimes they're adding new exceptions or taking away exceptions, for example. So just watch that space. Finally, I know it was less than five minutes for this part, I will, but just because it was promised to you, but I didn't come prepared for it. I'll give you the high level of 1829. So 1829 is an amendment to LD 2003, which most people know by now, which is a legislature's attempt to address housing matters. Came out of a, came out of a study committee on housing. In essence, it does require more density to sort of, and some affordable housing provisions. So sort of three main areas of LD 2003, and this, in 1829, did tweak each of those three areas in certain ways. So one is accessory dwelling units. You maybe already know that accessory dwelling units are now allowed for every single family lot, every single dwelling. This law will amend it to say it's also, 180 is also allowed to be attached or within a multifamily dwelling. The affordable housing provisions, so that was the second sort of bucket. You may remember there's affordable housing density requirements now in the designated growth areas. The one sort of major change there in 1829 is now those affordable housing projects that qualify can also go one story higher than your local ordinances. One story or 14 feet. I understand that there may be a errors and omissions bill in this next session, some of the language doesn't read quite right, and so I know that, that there may be some clarifying. But right now, it just says one story or 14 feet, and say whichever's greater, whichever's lesser, for example, doesn't define story. So it would be nice to see some clarification there. And then finally, the density provision, I shouldn't say finally, there's one other after that. The density provision, which you may know as the up to four units provision, which required a somewhat complicated, you get two units or three units or four units, depending on how you, where you've fit, um, it, it to replace that whole, whole section. So now all lots get either three dwelling units or four dwelling units if you're in a designated growth area or served by public or, uh, public water sewer centrally managed system. But even, but the, the more sort of, I think, uh, biggest change is actually not that, it's, it's the lot size restrictions. So three different categories, uh, lot size restriction, um, if you're in a growth, designated growth area and you're served by public water and sewer or a centrally managed system, which is a big distinction, because you could engineer a system, for example. A minimum lot size cannot exceed 5,000 square feet. And the density cannot exceed 1,250 square feet per dwelling unit for the first four dwelling units and 5,000 square feet for each additional dwelling unit. If you're outside the growth area, but you're still served by public water sewer or central managed system, again, there's going to be a 5,000 square foot, um, minimum lot size and five, but the density's a little bit bigger outside the growth area. So 5,000 square feet for the first two units is all it says. It's silent after that. And then the third category is inside a growth area but not served by public water sewer. And there are some towns that have that, they're maybe putting in a growth area, but they haven't yet expanded their sewer systems. The minimum lot size cannot exceed the state subsurface wastewater minimum lot size, which is currently 20,000 square feet. And then, um, and then there's the training requirement with, which SMC, PDC noted, zoning boards and planning boards must now get trained within a period of time of appointment or when the law goes into effect. And then the final one I'll mention is it does slightly change the definition of a subdivision. Not as, not as broad as I think so, in some of the earlier drafts, but it does change that, uh, which you may know a subdivision is, is the division of a parcel of land to three or more lots in a five-year period. If it's that, they're in front of you, ask for approval. That still is true for parcels of land. It's not true for dwelling units on the same parcel of land. So it used to be three as well, now it's five. So a subdivision for the construction of dwelling units on a, or the division of a building into dwelling units of five or more units in a three-year period is a subdivision. So that, again, is an attempt to, I guess, sort of lessen the regulatory burden on those proceedings, and, and the corresponding provision said planning boards cannot review housing developments of four or fewer dwelling units on the same lot. That prohibits that kind of local review. So you can't hit the fire for more because that's a subdivision. That's your high level. There's a lot more of that, and it doesn't go into effect for city council forms of government until July 1, 2026. For town meeting forms of government, July 1, 2027. So there will be some time. That was somewhat similar to how LD 2003 was rolled out. Um, there was one extension given at that point. There's still one more legislative session before next July 1, so you don't, they may tweak it in some way, but that's the way it reads today, and so you'll see that, I'm sure, coming forth with some amendments from your planning department. That's all I have. Do you have any questions?
Great, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Sossier at this time?
All right.
No?
I, Phil, I had a, I had a couple. Back early on, um, in your presentation, you, you mentioned a few, and there was a few phrases there that seemed to have been new to me, or maybe how you explained it. It was the appeal part, and someone who's appealing must have participated in, in the discussion, in the process. And then, and then with that, the, the drive-by, as, as you said, if you-
And a particularized injury.
Yeah, so is that, I guess, what's my question, of course, you're asking? How does that process work if an appeal is made and then it's vetted through the courts? Or how did, because the city goes directly to the court, it doesn't come to the municipal?
Right. That's right. Like I said, I brought that up just for part of your training, so you understand how that would work. You're really not going to be involved in that.
Sure.
So you're going to make your decision, and then people are going to decide whether they want to appeal or not.
Sure.
Right? If someone does appeal, it'll go to the Superior Court. One of the first things that, um, we would do if we were representing the municipality is you, you, you look at these, what we call threshold issues. Was it timely? All right, was it within the 30 days? Was it, did they file in the right court? And then did the person who filed the appeal have standing? And again, standing as a test for an appeal is a two-part test, and it's, did they participate in the underlying proceeding in some way? Either submit testimony, you know, come to the meetings, that kind of thing. And do they have particularized injury? And there's a, there's a lot more with that, sort of the analysis of what particularized injury means. Like, for example, there's an analysis about whether if it's a sort of citizen group that may be unincorporated, may not have particularized injury. Sometimes if there's a, a particular citizen group, but there's a single member that does have standing, the court may still let it go through because of that one single member's standing. But those are the kinds of things that your municipal attorney will look at, and if, if they argue, or they argue, but think that they didn't meet those threshold standards, you would argue that right off the bat to get the thing dismissed. Because the court knows, just like you guys have to go through that analysis on jurisdiction. If you don't have jurisdiction, you don't even hear the case. Right? So if someone files an application for a variance in front of you, you don't have the jurisdiction to hear a variance. So you'd say, I'm not going to hear that. Right? Um, if someone doesn't have right title and interest as you go through the, that's a threshold question, and you wouldn't go beyond that, because they don't have standing to be in front of you. So that's what the court would do, too. So that's what that means.
Okay. And then another one that I had, just maybe to explain it a little bit more, maybe for some newer members, the, the no personal research-
Yeah.
-sort of piece to that. I think we've had the conversation before that that's, it's different than if there's, if there's a project and it's, you travel a particular route, or you-
Right.
-observe or experience something on a daily basis that's not, you know, a particular out of your way. I mean, we're, we're all Saco residents, and that's why we're here, sort of thing.
That's right.
But that's, that's different than something you experience in a, a daily occurrence for, for whatever reason. It's, it's not, that's not the same.
That's a, that's a good, yeah, that's a good distinction to make, right? You, it's not just that you're driving on your route, or you know it because you live here, you've driven past that site hundreds of times. That's obviously, it's, if you went out of your way to go to that site, get out of your car, walk around, you know, test out the setbacks, people do stuff like that, right?
Sure.
They want to do it, they want to know, and they're, they just think they're doing their job, but, but if they're doing it on their own and not as part of a, a public proceeding, um, that could be a due process violation.
Sure.
So you're right. It's not the day-to-day or the stuff you know. If you do know it, and I hear, if you do know it because you drive by it every day, it's worth mentioning that as part of your discussion. Right? So like, I, I drive by that every day, I see that site, I know where that is, and so some, what I'm saying is informed by that. But you're saying that publicly, and people have the right, then have the ability to, again, rebut what you're saying or provide different information.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. And then the last piece was that the planning board doesn't, we don't get involved in title disputes.
Right.
So that was on your right title and interest component. So there, when, what would be your recommendation, so if there's, if there's an, an item along the lines of that, and there are questions, where, how far can the board take questions? Or maybe there's easements, or are there shared rights or anything like that? What would be your recommendation there for, you know, how would, how would the board go through a process like that?
So what I would say is if, if someone presents a document in front of you that on the face of it says this person has an access easement to their lot, to me, that's enough to say, for your purposes, they have right to an interest. That doesn't mean that someone who disputes that doesn't have a private case against that person, if they think there was something defective, right, with that easement, or they're arguing about the boundary lines or something like that. You're not making a proclamation as to someone's property ownership. It sounds like you are, because it's right title or interest. You're just saying, do they have, essentially on its face, they're presenting it with you. Because remember, it can even be an option contract. That's enough.
Sure.
Of course, I've said, for, yeah, I, I may buy that thing, or I have the right to buy it, I should say, pending approval. And that happens a lot in commercial aspects. People don't want to buy something if they're not going to get approvals, for example.
Yeah.
So that's enough. Now, I wasn't going to spend too much time on this, but there is, there's one case that kind of muddied the waters a little bit, and you may hear it, people say, it's called Tomasino versus the Town of Casco. It came out about five years ago, I think it was about five years ago, and that was a dispute over an easement, and whether, specifically, whether that easement holder, who was using it to get to their property, had the right to cut down trees, I want to say, and the underlying landowner said they did not, to widen it. And that case, the reason I said muddied the waters, because on one hand, if you read that opinion, and there's a fairly long dissent in that opinion as well, on one hand, the court sort of gave you the black light that I already gave you, right? You're not a title court, we don't decide those disputes. You know, they cited the standard, which is someone's applying for the right to use the property in the way that their, their deed says or their easement says. But then it also said, in the face of a dispute over the, over the, it was very specific, face of a dispute over the, over the ability, the right of the easement to do what they're asking to do. So in this case, it was to cut down, partly to cut down those trees to be able to have the widening, and the underlying property owner was saying, no, they did not have that. Then you essentially step aside and let, and you didn't go forward, they, they, that board did not go forward with the application until that dispute was resolved in the courts between those two private parties. So there's been different interpretations about the case, whether it's a broad application, or it was very specific as the right of an easement in that case, under those kind of circumstances, under the Town of Casco's ordinances. But that case did, did, uh, change a little bit our analysis, so if it's a very tight question or a close question, oftentimes that's when we're brought in through your planner or something like that, to say, this is a little bit closer to that situation, can you give us some advice on that?
Sure, and that-
Yeah.
-that example was within the Casco's ordinance specifically-
Right.
-when there's a dispute regarding an easement.
Yeah.
Okay.
But the court did make sort of a more general state, you know, holding, so that's why it's a little bit, yeah. So there, there is some analysis that has to happen from time to time, um, if you get something that's really tightly, you know, hotly contested on right title and interest.
Sure.
And that will be sort of cycled through the planning department, up to the legal team, and then we'll provide, ultimately, you guys make the decision, but we'll provide advice on that, or, or your other town, or your municipal attorney.
Sure.
Yeah.
Okay. That was all I had. Any other, or Catherine?
I have a question about recusals. I have a question about recusals. You talked about if you're a family member of a butter, but what if you are directly the butter?
Yeah, that's a good question. I, that's an appearance of conflict, in other words, it doesn't necessarily meet those per se tests, but that's something where clearly there's an appearance, right? Because you are in a butter, you probably have the right to appeal any decision, and so I usually recommend that you do step down. You don't have to, right? If for whatever, if you say to yourself, I can be, um, you know, unbiased without predisposition, I feel like I can sit on this, I really don't have opinion one way or the other about this particular application, even though I live down the road, you can still, if you feel that way, say that, have your fellow board members vote. But the statute does, um, require you to attempt to avoid any even appearance of conflict. So even if, even if you feel that way, depending on the circumstances of that application, you still may want to, to, so the public has trust in the decision-making that's happening.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess kind of playing a little bit on Catherine's last topic, um, in the packet you had prepared that was in our packet, it talked about abstentions. When, when a board member abstains a vote, withholds a vote, I kind of got the interpretation that we're supposed to provide a reason. Are we really supposed to be providing a reason, or can it be that you're just torn on the, the data and you just didn't want to provide a vote at that time?
Um, I'm not sure where that said that, but I, I have some thoughts on abstentions. Generally, you're not supposed to abstain unless there's a conflict.
Okay.
Right? The general rule, some ordinances, I don't think your ordinance says this, but I've actually seen some ordinances that say you should, you cannot abstain unless you have a conflict. Because remember, at the, at the end of the day, you're, you were, you were appointed to do your job, and because the decision's hard, it's not a reason not to vote.
Touching on the right title and interest piece, kind of a scenario, an application comes before us, they start the review, they have a purchase and sale agreement, it's in play, start working through review process, it's a big review, technical issues come up, they kind of pull back with their team, miss a couple meeting cycles, review continues. At some point, it was missed that the purchase and sale agreement expires. When that is brought to the attention of the board, is that grounds to basically pause immediately at that point until the applicant can produce an extension form? Or is the intent there, then the board should continue its review?
No, I think in that instance, it's reasonable to ask them if they have a, you know, I wouldn't necessarily go right to denial.
Not denial, but just-
But I would, I would give them an opportunity to say, look, this has been expired, you'll, you'll need to, at the next meeting, present, you know, sufficient right title and interest, or we'll have to, you know, we'll have to move on from this application.
So we could kind of continue review, no final decision, and then have them produce it at the next meeting for continued review?
Yeah, I would, yeah, but I wouldn't vote or, or get any approval without the right title and interest in place.
Okay. I was asking a, a little bit, when you were talking about the appeals process, and I seem to remember in the packet for the LD 29, that they are forming, is they're forming a new review board of like three members, an engineer, a realtor, and a public, that would handle all the reviews with regards to LD 29? So if, if somebody appeals a planning board decision, is there, I got the impression that, um, that the citizens, they couldn't appeal it to the courts, it had to go through, is that misunderstood?
So 1829, I think you mean, but no, it, that did not pass.
Okay.
So there was a provision. In fact, I think if you go back to the original study commission, 2003 came out of, it was like, one of their recommendations is a statewide appeals board for, and it may have been intended for affordable housing projects. I've seen that proposed in other bills, um, that if an affordable housing project, for example, was denied, that it would go to a statewide appeals board for that instead of the local appeals or the Superior Court right away. That has not passed. That may come up in the future, but no, that, I think that, that's been proposed, but not, yeah.
Okay. And then to just kind of clarify a little bit of the individual research as board members, like you said, we are all professionals in certain, certain fields. If there's something that you, you know you've seen, is it wrong to get the data? So let's just say, you know, residential sprinklers, we're talking about residential sprinklers, and I, man, I know there's been a whole bunch of data on water damage, and we're having this discussion. Is it wrong to go and collect like data that, you know, the state of Philadelphia and, and Jersey have done these histories, and they've reported all their insurance companies, they had X number of thousand water damage? Is that going too far? I mean, you know that there, is, you just supposed to say, hey, there's an issue here, and I can't give you the data, but you as the applicant bring it to me?
Yeah, so it's a pretty short answer, no, you should not be doing that.
Okay.
If you have that information, or you want that information, you should request it from either staff or the applicant.
Okay.
Right? So sometimes board members will, during meetings, um, say, I'd like to know if there's studies on this, or something like that. Or to the applicant, stormwater system, can you provide more information about the efficacy of that process? Was that, you know, not, you know, disallowed in certain states? Can you provide more information?
Mm-hmm.
That's how you would go about it. You know, you would, you should not be doing that yourself, um, for the reasons that I went over. To the extent that that ever does happen, even though it shouldn't happen, what we, what you would need to do to potentially try to cure it is to, uh, make sure every member of the board and the public has the information that you compiled, and that the applicant board and the public has the information that you compiled, and that the applicant and members of the public have the ability to comment on it and rebut it, right? But again, it shouldn't happen in the first place.
Thank you.
I have a question that Jeff just brought up about abstaining, because I had read, like, I'm new to the board.
Yeah.
And we have some projects that have been coming up off and on for the last year, and I've been abstaining from some of those because I just don't have, like, I haven't been on, and in the sidewalks or anything like that. Should I not continue to do that?
No, that's actually a good distinction. I'm sorry, to my, the general rule I reviewed. So you, you should, you should only participate in votes that you have participated in, right? So you can, again, there's a way to cure not being part of that, which is to go back and watch all of the meetings, review all of the materials, and some board members do that. Say that you've listened to everything. You would then say that on the record if you want, if you felt like you wanted to and could participate, say that on the record. And you would oftentimes even to really do it the right way is to get approval from the applicant to say, "I'd like to continue to sit." But there is a way to do that, and that's not necessarily as uncommon as you think. Board members have to miss meetings for various reasons. You're out of the state, you're sick. That doesn't mean you're not going to, it's like a multi-meeting process. You can still sit on that, but you should go back and review the recording and the minutes and stuff like that.
Okay. Thanks.
Yeah.
Yeah, Jim?
Mr. Chair. Phil, just one last question. The, your materials indicated for recusal, that it might be a good idea for the person who is, accuses him or herself to actually leave the room. And that would eliminate the problem, I guess, of making faces at the board members.
Right. Try to influence in some way.
So in instances of recusal, you, you know, someone would literally leave the chamber and sit outside until that matter's completed?
Right.
Great. That's all.
At a minimum, and there's an argument whether that's required or not, that's obviously sort of like best practice, but at a minimum, you should leave the dais and sit in the, you know, sit in the audience at a minimum. But if you have no reason to participate, you could just leave the room, and it avoids any suggestion that there's any impropriety.
That's great. Mr. Chair. Thanks.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you. Any other thoughts or questions from board members?
All right.
All right.
Thank you, guys. Thanks for having me.
Thank you again.
Mr. Chair, can we take a short break before the rest of the meeting starts?
Sure. We'll, we'll take a five to seven minute recess. Sure. We'll continue here this evening. Our next item on our agenda after our training session here is our planning board SOP update. This is a document we've been working on with staff to revise. We've had a presentation from staff. I think the board's had an opportunity to review that document. There's also been a few general correspondences relative to that information as well. But we're looking, I guess, Lauren, this evening, we're looking to make a determination on that document or edits if the board feels necessary.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I think if a determination could be made on that document, that would be great.
So with that, board members, we've, we've had an opportunity to go over this with staff. We've, it was presented to us. Any questions, comments, concerns on this document? Jim?
I recall a member of the public raised a question about applicants not being respectful to members of the public and requesting that there be some changes to the SOP to address that. But when I was looking at the SOP, one of my notes was that, I think it's on page eight of 17, under public comment, comments guidance, there is a sentence in there which indicates that public comment is not meant to ridicule others and maintain and organize a lawful hearing. Public comment is meant to, a public comment that is meant to ridicule or intentionally made to attack staff, board members, applicants, or other members of the public will not be tolerated, will be addressed during the meeting by the chair. Also, similar conduct by a board member, applicant, or member of the public to another at the meeting will not be tolerated, and will be addressed during the meeting by the chair or vice chair. So I think our, and I don't think that just deals with public meetings or public comments in a formal sense. So I think that member of the public's concerns are addressed by that language that already exists in the SOP. So I don't think we need to add anything to it, but I think we should be sensitive to, if applicants are being disrespectful to members of the public, we should become aware of it, and particularly if it happens at a meeting, and so that either you, Mr. Chair, or the vice chair can, can comment on that. But otherwise, I think all the proposed changes to the SOP make perfect sense.
All right. Thank you, Jim. Any other thoughts from board members? Joyce?
I guess just to follow up on, on the comment that Jim was talking about, I had the impression that the, the behavior was witnessed outside of the bounds of our meeting, and I, I really don't know how the chair or staff could control what happens outside of this room during a meeting. I think these, the SOP is limited to conduct of the meetings. So I certainly agree, you know, these, these guidelines already address what happens during the meeting. And in, in the context of this proceeding, I, I don't know how the chair or any of us could have control over what happens outside of this room.
And Mr. Chair, I agree. I, I had understood from those comments that it actually happened during a break at one of our meetings here. So that's why I thought our SOP could cover it. But I agree with Joyce. If this happens on the street the next day, I mean, we have no control over that. That's, that's, someone else needs to deal with that.
Thank you, Joyce. Thank you, Jim. Any other thoughts from board members? Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I mean, I concur with Jim and Joyce on that particular topic. There was another topic that was brought up by the public with regards to applicants and kind of, you know, the amount of time spent at the podium. And it's a difficult one, you know, for me, because we're relying on the applicant to provide all this information. They have this burden to present the facts. I do clearly understand what they were asking for about clearly defined times when the applicant could stand there. And I guess this was kind of where I came up with my mind, was do we want to add a little bit more, put a little shift of roles in our declaration of what the roles of the planning board are under Section A? Is that something that we should possibly put on the vice chair's kind of plate? Just because I watch the chairman, and I'm always amazed at how much stuff he has to keep track of when he's trying to run this meeting, right? And to have to look up at the applicant and say, "Excuse me, this is not your time." Every time they kind of wander up there, I think it's very burdensome. I couldn't ever do that role. But would it make sense to have a designated board member, maybe the vice chair, that's kind of role would be, they wouldn't be speaking out of term so much, just to say, "Excuse me, you know, we're not ready for you to address the board yet. We'll, we'll let you know." I don't know. It's just, it's just kind of a thought, but I, I know exactly what the, you know, the public was talking about, because I've watched some times where they just kind of come right up and start talking to us, and we haven't even decided whether we're ready to continue review yet. And it's hard, right? We want to kind of keep a formal process and not shut them out, but there does need to be some, some guidelines and some rules. That's why we have this, this in, in place. So I didn't know what other board members thought of, maybe do we put a little something under the role of the vice chair, saying that they are, you know, or have the authority to kind of speak out and say, you know, "It's not time to, to address it if something is going a little out of line as far as our order." Or is it too much burden? I mean, we all have a lot of things going on. We're looking at our notes, we're reviewing packets. That was one, one piece. So I don't know if we want to talk about that. The second piece I had was there's language in here about receiving and review of after-the-fact packets. And it's stated very clearly that the chair and the vice chair will decide if it's too much to, to be digested before the meeting and then, you know, basically allowed to be submitted as part of the packet. I guess I would kind of like to be able to take a vote on that, on each time when an applicant comes before us. I don't feel like I personally review material as fast as some of my, my peer members, but I like to be prepared. I think it's the only way to be fair and equitable to both parties. So if somebody's giving me a packet, you know, that's 13 pages as we walk into the meeting, I kind of feel like that's not going to be, you know, submitted as part of my review. And I think maybe we should have the ability to kind of vote on that before we start review, before the applicant comes forward to the podium for the night. Just my thought on two topics. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other thoughts from board members?
And I agree with Jeff on that, that it should be the decision of the board as a whole as to whether we have enough time to properly review and digest the materials that have been provided to us at the last minute. And I appreciate the fact that members of the public aren't necessarily getting the packets quickly, and if, if their materials aren't going to be included if they don't provide them by the Wednesday beforehand, it, it's difficult for members of the public. And we've had that discussion before, that some people don't get their mail on a timely basis. That may just mean that something gets tabled to the next meeting before we make a final decision. I mean, it's no one's fault necessarily because there are extenuating circumstances. And certainly, it's been mentioned in the past, not just people not getting the mail, but there are times where people want to get legal advice, and you get the information on a Thursday or Friday, you're not going to be able to talk to an attorney and get any information and anything useful for them before the following Tuesday's meeting. So, yeah, I definitely agree with that. And I don't know about being the vice principal here. Well, I think because in general, it's the chair's job to recognize people and, and give them leave to speak. And generally speaking, I mean, personally, I don't, I'm not concerned by people standing at the podium or not. I'm concerned with people speaking out of turn.
Thank you, Joyce. Jim?
There's just, on that point about, I guess Jeff made, about the, you know, people coming up to the podium and just speaking, and I guess the concern was mostly applicants who had, like, set themselves up prior to its real, their, their opportunity to speak. And I'm looking at page seven of our SOP, and this is how the public meeting is, is The concern I have, what I understood from the member of the public was that the applicant has an opportunity to speak, and then the...
applicant has an opportunity to speak and then the public has an opportunity to speak. And then, under number six, the board is supposed to immediately start a discussion. Well, one of the problems I've noticed is, you know, the applicant makes a presentation, members of the public speak, but then I would like more information from the applicant to maybe rebut whatever the members of the public said or to supplement it in some way. Or if we're looking at, you know, you know, that may raise additional questions in my mind that I'll want to ask the applicant again. So, I, I look at this, numbers one through eight on our public meeting list and, and I, I don't think that the only opportunity for the applicant to speak should be just under number three, the presentation, because sometimes these projects are so complicated, we, we need to keep going back and forth. The one thing I will say is that if anyone, if we are having a public hearing and anyone on the board has a question to ask the applicant after all the members of the public have spoken, I, I don't think we should automatically close the public hearing. I think we should ask the applicant our questions and then that may cause other members of the public to come up and speak. So, I, I think that there can be some give and take there that isn't listed explicitly in our, on our standard operating procedures, but I, I think common sense would suggest that we, we have to have some flexibility there so that we can get all the information we need to be able to make a decision.
Yeah. Thank you, Jim. Jeff?
I, I agree. Jim, I, I think that's one of the reasons we have it spaced out like that, where, you know, number four, we open the public hearing, five, the public comments heard, board discussion, it's that board discussion that kind of starts in a bigger application, a two-way conversation. We just have to be very diligent, because we're not closing the public hearing until step number seven. We just have to be very diligent that if any new material or material that may want to be rebutted is discussed in our deliberations and maybe questioning of an applicant, that we make sure that we give, provide the opportunity to the general public to then comment on that newer information, right, before we close our public hearing. So, I think the steps are fine and what you're bringing up is, is very valid, right? Because there's a lot of communication clarification that we need during our discussions. So, I'm, I'm fine with that. We're just as long as we're always very diligent to make sure that the public has kind of the last opportunity to rebut anything that they heard during that fact gathering piece and we enter our deliberations. But once we enter our deliberations, it should be very clear that the applicant's no longer coming up to, to interject any new material. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah. I also concur. This, our order here during board discussion doesn't violate any of, of these pieces or this process. It's the, the board discussion, if, if there's discussion with the applicant and with the public again, all under the umbrella of an open public hearing. That's, that's the intent of the discussion. So, I, I agree. As far as, as Joyce presented, I think it's under the chair's responsibility to, to run the meeting, of course. And I think that's in part of my duty and something that I think that I can work on introduction verbiage and when we start our applications for review, further describe that process and how it's going to go. I think we can do that, or I think I can do that. I changed my verbiage a little bit in the last couple of meetings and I think it was successful. So, I think that's something that we can mitigate. I'd like to, as far as the, the conversations outside or whatnot, I think we can, what I'd like to do is revise my opening statement and I think with that, talk about how everyone's going to conduct themselves and expectations from everybody once they, you know, enter into the meeting. I think that would, I think that could assist in something. Jim brought up a good point, is obviously we can't control situations outside of this room, but we, we'll work towards, you know, further controlling and setting the tone of, of what happens in here. So, I think that's something, I think that's something we can, we can do. Joyce?
Yeah. And I guess maybe just mentioning that, that the standards of behavior continue during any breaks.
Absolutely.
Because, I mean, if we're taking a five or 10-minute break, I don't, I don't think the rules change.
Yep. And then, as, as far as the after-the-fact packets, that's, it's been a, when we, when we first started talking about this topic here with the city planner and I, the, the conversation did come up about voting and how we work through that and talking about fairness, inclusivity. I don't disagree. I think we can make that a board decision, you know, to look at it and review it. It's, it could be a challenge, of course, in determining what the material is, when it's received. We also, I think in fairness, it would be, it's, it's something the board's going to have to work through as, as I'm stumbling through my thoughts here and trying to problem solve all at the same time. Obviously, it's that presentation, everybody gets that material. Everybody has a chance to review it, whether it's material from the public that the applicant gets to review and has sufficient time or vice versa, additional information from the applicant that the, that the board and the public gets to review. The type of information, we obviously can't deliberate on it until it's, you know, received in the record and I would say it hitting our desk until the board receives and acknowledges it. That's the whole part of the process is we get it, we vote, we see, yes, we're good, we can apply it to tonight, or no, we cannot. So, I think that's, might be a, it's going to have to be a per instance. Maybe it's not a packet entirely, but we'll have to, I guess, see, see how it goes sort of thing. I don't like saying that, but I think the board, I think the board will be seeing it and making a decision on it, a determination. I guess I would say, you know, early in our agenda, I know our general correspondences are near the end, but I think that's something we might have to shift. Any other thoughts, Lauren or Ben, any thoughts on that?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I, yeah, I think that the, I think that the board should continue to, to work on the SOP and moving forward into the agenda.
We'll share a microphone. It's a little easier to manage. So, Ben Smith, North Star Planning. Generally, I think this is a good discussion about accepting materials at the meeting for all the reasons you discussed. I know that there, there is a pretty good process in place today, but I, I certainly understand the, the concern about, you know, how much, how long is it, how technical is it, those kinds of things almost need to be made on a case-by-case basis. I, I, I think a board vote would be a fine way to do it, if it was associated with each application rather than under a general correspondence perhaps. One other method I've seen is that the acceptance of materials at the meeting is up to the discretion of the chair, where the board kind of authorizes the chair, say, you know what, we'll take that, or if it's a giant stack of stormwater details, it's like, we're not going to take that. So, it, I, I don't know if you'll answer that question on how to proceed tonight, but I, I think it is worthy of discussion and, and maybe if, if there's a short-term answer, it's thinking about each one of those as they're associated with, with the application when you get to that part of the agenda.
Thank you, Ben. In regards to that, I definitely don't disagree, but one concern or question I have is if, if material's been received for an application that is near the end of the agenda and the board waits till the, or, or if it gets late in the evening, that the board cannot take up that item until that time and then the board finds that that application, that material won't be accepted, the board finds it needs to be reviewed whether by the board, by staff, both, and therefore tables it immediately or that, that's sort of the question bouncing around in my head, that if the board feels that it's appropriate to table that item straight away based on that material, is it better to do that early on, make it clear, scheduling, notification? Or the board, we've, we've had that discussion before, where we take the item, talk about the project as a whole, maybe that document isn't part of that discussion and then, and then the, you know, review continues. That's sort of the, up, up to the board. I guess that's, that's our, that's our role is to, to talk and those are just sort of the things that are moving around in my head and that's all.
Yeah. I, I think that's fair and, and I, I don't know if this is like, tonight's the one chance to talk about the SOP or if this is like an ongoing as-needed, updates get made kind of thing, but this is the kind of thing probably would deserve a little more, you know, thinking about different scenarios or what-if kind of situations.
Sure. That's a great question and I, we don't, I don't believe we have a running when we review or update the SOP. I think we sort of collect thoughts and gather information and sort of review when we need to, but, so with that, I guess as far as the SOP as presented to us this evening, any other, any thoughts or edits, any adjustments that we want to make? Any other thoughts? I mean, we've, we've talked about some ideas here, but really, go ahead.
Sorry. Mr. Chair, could I just add a comment? So, if it's a process change that you'd like to try out, I think that that's something that you could go ahead and do and if the process then doesn't work out in the way that you'd like, you could always go back to changing.
Sure.
So, yeah.
Sure. This is, it's, it's not that we have this, we can only change this every January, of course. Sure.
Jeff?
I guess, Mr. Chair, I mean, I mean, I agree with all the topics, but I still feel like it, it's being left in limbo. I'm kind of looking specifically at late submissions on page eight, section two, the new red line is where it's really kind of spelling out that the chair and the vice chair will review these late submissions and kind of make a ruling. And at the end, it talks about the board may decide to continue, then we as a board. And I don't know if we could maybe edit it a little bit. So, the, the proposed language is, "The chair and vice chair will review the after-the-fact packet materials at the meetings and will make recommendations on whether materials submitted by applicants after the due date will be considered or be reviewed at a future meeting. When making this decision, the chair and vice chair may consider the time it will take to review materials, the length of the board agenda for the evening, and comments from other board members about their ability to review materials. If items received after the fact, in the after-the-fact packet, are not able to be reviewed because of the volume or the timing of the receipt, the board may decide to continue the review until another meeting without further discussion." And I guess I would just kind of say, could we just change that last sentence where "Any board member may request a vote to continue the review to another meeting without further discussion." That still puts the burden on kind of the chair and the vice chair, but if there's a board member or two that feels like the submission was excessive and we don't have time to review it, we can request a vote, which will then force a roll call and then we can move forward or not and, and table it. I just think it's a good mechanism, not leaving so much up in the air for the chair and the vice chair to make the determination if some of the board members feel like it, it's too much and we can easily expedite it by requesting a vote. That gives us the option to request it, doesn't require it. I don't know if that would be, be acceptable, but I think that couldn't take care of everything. Because like you said, I, I don't mind a, a two or three-page email correspondence between an engineer and, and the public works director saying, yes, all these things are up to date. I don't like receiving a traffic study after the fact. It's not fair for everyone, but at least depending on the volume, we could make the decision. So, maybe if we could make that edit, we could move forward with this SOP as it's drafted.
Sure. Thank you, Jeff. So, so perhaps a, an edit, we can really just continue, let's say we continue that sentence. "The board may decide to continue the review to another meeting without further discussion by roll call vote."
Well, I would like to just have the verbiage in there that "Any board member may request the vote," because by roll call vote, in my interpretation, would indicate that the chair would have to decide if we're going to take a vote versus if the language was in there that any board member could request it. I could say, "Mr. Chair, I feel like this after-the-fact packet is too long, we can't review. I would like to request a vote from the board to see if we allow submission." And then that takes it, that any one of us can, can flag it, would be my thought.
Sure. I'm not, I'm not against that. I see it as where the board, if the board decides to continue, if anyone says they would like to continue, that's sort of, in my head, that triggers it, but with the lawyers. We can, Lauren, you can draft up something along that item to, to do that, that any, any board member may decide to continue and add, add a vote into that, I think. Without any other thoughts from board members? I see some acceptance here. So, something along those lines, I think the board would be satisfied.
Great. Mr. Chair, I'm happy to do that.
Thank you. Any other thoughts, questions, concerns, or edits?
So, Mr. Chair, are you looking for a, a formal motion to alter that, that language at the end of that sentence and then vote on the SOP? Or are you looking to have this continued to another meeting?
I, I think the board, I think it's up to the board. I think the way our discussion has been, it seems like if the board is in agreement with that edit on section four E, number two, if I've gotten all that correct, then I think if the board is comfortable with that, we could make a motion to accept the document as amended. And unless the board would like to review, review that specific language at a further meeting, I think, I think based on our discussion, I'm comfortable with that edit myself.
Well, I'm, I'm comfortable with Jeff's suggestion too. So, if, if we, if we can get this sort of form to actually vote on it tonight, then if we all agree on the language of that last sentence, then we could actually vote on it tonight, right?
Yes.
So, I would suggest, following Jeff's recommendation, that after the comma, on the word receipt and after the comma, have the rest of that sentence read, "Any member of the board may request a vote to continue the review of the matter to another meeting without further discussion." Does that address your concern, Jeff? So, if everyone understands understands that, and if the staff has that, then, Mr. Chair, I'll move that we adopt the amended standard operating procedures with the revision to that last sentence on page 18, number two.
Thank you for the motion, Jim.
And I'll second.
Second by Joyce, thank you.
Page eight.
I, I believe it's on page eight.
Page eight, paragraph two, late submission procedure.
Yes, page eight, paragraph two, the last sentence.
Yeah, I heard 18, I'm sorry.
So did I.
Oh, sorry. I did not enunciate.
Any additional discussion? All right. Those in favor of adopting the standard operating procedures as amended, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
A vote yes as well, motion passes seven zero. All right, with that, we will move to review of our prior meeting minutes. We have before us our August 19th draft meeting minutes, and our September 2nd draft meeting minutes will be available at our next meeting. So, with that, do board members have any questions, comments, or edits for the draft meeting minutes from August 19th?
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the draft meeting minutes for the August 19th, 2025 meeting.
I will second.
As presented.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce, and second, Jeff. Any additional discussion on the motion? All right, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Abstain.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
I will vote yes as well, motion passes six zero with one abstention. All right, our next item on the agenda this evening is our Public Planning Board Hearing Guidelines. This is a document that we have published. There's a hard copy in the back of the auditorium for anyone that would like to review it, as long, as well as digital copies on the city's website. If anyone has any questions on those, please do not hesitate to ask, and we will provide any clarity we can. From there, we have item seven, we have our public comment period. This is an opportunity for any members of the public to come before the board and speak on any general planning matters. We will collect those comments, and we will address them accordingly. So, if anyone would like to come to the podium, please state your name and address for the record, and we'll go from there.
Tony Armstrong from Lost and Road Cape Elizabeth, Maine. I'm the real estate broker for property owners on Cascade Road that are involved with the subdivision there in the Dome Project, and I've been listening on this conversation, and I took note of the email, I believe you received from Ms. Archer last week regarding broker activities, discussions, et cetera, et cetera. And what I'd like to say is, if someone was disturbed by what happened there, I apologize. Certainly, nothing happened outside of this room, I'll say that. But secondly, I'll certainly respond in writing, but I would like to say that it was my impression that there were some fairly significant inaccuracies that were testified to at the hearing that night, and people on our side of the fence were not prepared to respond to them because they were somewhat technical, and I can be specific if you want, they had to do with title and PFAS issues and that kind of stuff. And I'm sure we will be responding. And I want to clarify one thing, though. I am not, as referenced in that communication, a lawyer for the landowners. I'm a real estate broker. I am a lawyer. I'm licensed to practice law in Maine, but I am practicing here as a real estate broker. I'm also licensed as a real estate broker. So, I'll respond in writing, and I just wanted to clarify some of this, because my concern is that some things get, I'll just be simple about it, things get testified to here by folks, and oftentimes, there's just no basis for them. They have their right to say what they want, and the other side has the right to respond, but sometimes you just can't respond immediately. You got to do some research. And I think it's important that the board reserve their opinions until they hear from the other side and understand that the reason there may be delay in response is because it is indeed technical information that just come, just came to the table at that time. Okay? Any questions? Thanks.
Great, thank you, sir.
Hi, Kelly Archer, 185 Bradley Street. I wasn't going to comment until I, I now need to comment. As everyone, I believe, knows, my due diligence is exceptional, and I read the details. I have questions as a, as a interested party or as citizen of Saco. And my questions are valid. I will not be dismissed. I will not be silenced. I will not have, be approached in these chambers. I do agree with you that anything outside these chambers, I never brought it up for years of what has happened outside of these chambers. Everybody has a right to do whatever they want. I'm tough-skinned. However, to have an application, and I know we shouldn't be talking about pending applications, but I didn't bring it up. I have never witnessed in the 13 years that I have been an appointee to the HPC, or an appointee to the ZOURS, or highly involved in better governance for the City of Saco for all these years. I have everybody's best interest at heart, even the applicants. However, fair, equitable, being accountable, being accountable, and compliance is my mantra. It is not the actual application. And my concerns for you to, to discuss, deliver, deliberate, and decide upon, I will always give you 100% so you can make an informed decision. These questions are above my pay grade in those, in those emails that I sent to you. You are the regulatory body. You need to know all sides of, of an issue. What has happened in this administration, the current one, has been a 180. I am so very pleased with this planning board, with the planning staff, with the council, of what they are doing to turn around the culture in the City of Saco that has been presented through grievances. However, I will not be in a chamber and be approached with a tone and with the attempt to not allow me to make my next public hearing, which was on the same parcel but a separate application. I had it at the one prior to the, the subdivision, prior to the break. Other abutters responded, came and did their public hearing, but at break, to be intimidated, to silence, either that or butter. And that was first. And then attempt to come to me, where I said, "Do not talk to me. It is unacceptable. We've just heard the SOP, the SOP, and your deliberations." I felt heard. You addressed them. Nothing happened with it as far as a revision, but I am pleased with the process of having that conversation open. It may change in the future, especially if more information comes to you that you think that now you need to have a section for applicants and their affiliates, as I told you in all those other documents that we have, be it the Code of Ethics, be it the SOP, whatever it is. Those, those documents address public, staff, appointees. It does say public, we can kind of stretch it and say it's the applicants and the affiliates, and say they're part of the public, but they have a role. They, and what is my recourse? I mentioned it in my letter. I was about to come up at that second hearing after the break, and everything that I was going to say about my due diligence of an application was, might not have been done, because I was going to address you, Mr. Chair, because I don't know where the documents are, where's the meat, where's my position to say, what is the recourse? How do I report it? How does it get heard? I didn't think it was appropriate in the, in that application, the second one after the, after that, but even with thick skin, I was shaken up. Everyone was in the room. Nobody heard, saw it, heard it, or whatever, but it is in the city hall. We're better than this. So, what is, what, what is my recourse to be heard in that if I don't have a standard operating procedure that tells me this is what you've got to do? And as far as the ones through eight, I agree with everything that you said. Another public member, she's talking about that number three space. And yes, there is an order. However, the planning board members can ask any question at any time of an applicant or an affiliate through the chair and say, "I just want to ask a question." That's process, you know? And it's like, they have opportunities at number seven, number six, number five, except for when deliberations start. I don't think anybody has a voice after that. Only you guys do. So, I want to just come up here and just say, what's a recourse? I'm hoping this never happens again. And to what it did to the abutter, who's protecting us? You're our last line of defense. I want to know where I can go. I can go to the CA, I can go to the council, I could go to a chair. I can do it right now in front of all of you, because I will be fully transparent, full disclosure, and I will come to you always prepared in every question I have. And they should not be dismissed, because I know if I'm having those questions, you guys are having the doubts. And this is where staff and legal sometimes have to come in, and I do appreciate that I won't stop. I don't know the time, but this was my moment to speak in front of you face to face. Help us out so where this never happens again. And as far as the, the presentations of this training, after seven years of advocating, I was the one who initiated in December of 2017 as the chair of the HPC, requested of the planner at that time that we need training here in Saco. I want the attorney, the then attorney then, to develop a training program, not just for the HPC, but for the planning board and everybody else. I was the impetus as far as having the SOP, and as you all know, for 12 different times it was in the packet, we never had a decision during a highly controversial land, use, land application. Rules and process matters for everyone equally. And as far as the training today, I want to commend the staff, SMPDC, great information, great comments and questions from a planning board member, looking at all sides. As far as Mr. Saucier of Burst and Assure, exemplary. We are getting there towards good governance, and I want to thank everyone for where we are today than compared to what we were yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you. Briefly, in regards to your comments, the, and what we spoke about with our SOP, if any scenario like that, bring it, bring it to someone's attention. Start with the chair, and we'll go from there. If any, if anything, we'll, we won't let, we won't let it happen again. But if it does, please, if anyone, please bring it to the board's attentions, and we'll address it. All right, with that, we will move, Jeff?
Mr. Chair, just before we get into it, I know we have a lot of applicants remaining on our agenda. We also have a very, our SOP is no new business after nine o'clock, and seeing that it's, you know, 12 of nine, I think we should probably at least be courteous enough to maybe all the applicants from nine on that we, we're not going to be able to hear their, their plan, their proposals tonight, or continue on their application reviews. I don't, do we need to have, like, a motion to just, to continue to a later date for items nine?
So, you're, so we, go ahead, sorry.
Yeah, so it's eight.
Eight B, B and C? How is that broken up? So, you'd like to, you'd like to propose to the board that we, given the time, continue with our application review this evening for item eight A, and get the board's opinion on tabling item eight B, C, and D to a future meeting? Is that what you're getting at?
Correct.
Any thoughts from board members on that, concerns? Jim?
I, I mean, sometimes with these public hearings, a lot of people show up, and sometimes no one does. So, I can see where eight A could be an issue that, or an application which could go either way there. Eight B looks like a fairly simple matter. Eight B looks like a fairly simple matter. C is more complicated and, and as well as D, so. I mean, if I, my, my suggestion is we go through eight A and B and just continue C and D to, to another date.
Thoughts from Board members? We can, if the Board would like, we can adjust this agenda and we can, if the Board would like to, we've seen item eight B before. We've had discussion on that. We can review eight B and then move to eight A. If the Board would like, and we can look to table C and D to a future date, if the Board would like. Thoughts, recommendations? That seems to be, I, I recommend that. Because I, I wouldn't like to, if, if A gets lengthy, I don't want to keep someone here and then end up tabling because of time, whatever time that may be.
So Mr. Chair, I would move that we take the agenda out of order and start by reviewing item eight B first for Amari Springs subdivision street acceptance. And then with time remaining, continue on to eight A for the 12th and 14th Beth Johnston Way, with the intent that we will be tabling the remaining item, agenda items. Eight E for One Elm Street and eight D for Waterfall Drive.
I second.
Motion made by Jeff, seconded by Carrie Lynn. Any additional discussion? With that, given the time, Jeff, would you propose a time to continue to? Based on expectation of going beyond our nine o'clock?
Oh, for this evening?
Yes.
For this evening, I'd say it was a hard stop at nine thirty. I know we normally like to make a, what we're tabling to, but our SOP kind of talks about, you know, just the next available meeting for the items that we're going to table. So I think that's understood in the motion, that they'll be tabled to the next meeting.
Do we have Lauren, a date available that you know of that we could add to the motion?
Mr. Chair, I think that we could table the items to October seventh. Is that correct? Yeah, and just understanding that there are already five items on that agenda. So some items may need to be moved until October 21st, where there are no items yet, so.
Okay, understood. Any additional discussion? So motion to take the agenda out of order and take item eight B, then item eight A, tabling items eight C and eight D to October second? Second or seventh?
Seventh.
Seventh. Excuse me, seventh. And continuing this evening to nine thirty. Are those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
A vote yes as well, motion passes, seven zero. All right, so with that, moving to item eight B, Amari Springs subdivision. This evening, we have a review for a city street acceptance per chapter 186 of the city ordinance. Planning board members, any conflicts or disclosures on this item? No. Lauren, any updates on this item?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So a punch list was issued by the Department of Public Works. The developer has completed all of the items on the punch list. We're still currently awaiting the city attorney's review of drafted easements and deeds. So the Board is asked to review the materials and make a recommendation to City Council with the understanding that Council will not make a final determination on street acceptance until those drafts have been reviewed by the city's attorney, so.
Okay, great, thank you, Lauren. Board members, any questions for city staff at this time? And the applicant is with us, anything to add?
No, everything's been complete. And the docs were reviewed by Tim Murphy when it was all approved. So they're just getting rereviewed again, so we should be in pretty good shape. And if there is any changes, more than happy to work with, with the town attorney to get any changes done.
All right, great, thank you. Board members, any questions for the applicant? And Lauren, this is not a public hearing. This is just a, a board deliberation and review and recommendation to City Council, correct?
Yes, that's correct, Mr. Chair.
Great, thank you. Camille?
A question for city staff, Lauren. Do you have a sense of timing for when the drafts will be reviewed and completed by the attorney?
Is that all right to answer, Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, yes, please.
All right, thank you. So we don't actually have any feedback at this time. I know that it's something that is on the list of the city's attorney. And it's something that we've been pushing for. And yeah, I, I don't have an answer for that at this time, though.
Thank you.
Sure.
Thank you, Camille. Any other thoughts or questions from Board members? Jim?
No, Mr. Chair, I was ready to make a motion if it's appropriate.
Sure.
Mr. Chair, I move that we recommend to the City Council acceptance of the Amari Springs subdivision streets as public ways, provided that the city attorney review the warranty deeds, open space documents and easement agreements. And they're acceptable to the City Council.
I'll second.
Thank you for the motion, Jim, and the second by Carrie Lynn. Any additional discussion on the motion? All right, those in favor of the motion to provide a positive recommendation for city street acceptance pending city solicitor review? Those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
A vote yes as well, motion passes, seven zero. Thank you. That's everything on that item, Lauren?
Yes, Mr. Chair, that's everything.
All right, great, thank you. All right, our next item on our agenda this evening is item eight A. This is 12 and 14 Beth Johnston Way, map sixty lots fifteen through eighteen dash one and map sixty lot twenty. This is a site plan review this evening for a new elementary and primary school with associated site improvements. This is presented by the Saco School Department. And we have a public hearing and continued application review this evening. And this is within the Portland Road zoning district. Board members, any conflicts or disclosures on this item? Lauren, anything to add on this item?
Mr. Chair, I'm actually going to pass the mic to Ben.
Fantastic. Okay, thank you. Anything to add, Ben?
Only that the, the public hearing for this item is scheduled for this evening. The application was found complete on August 19th. This is for the, the school facility off of Millbrook and Portland Roads in the Portland Road zoning district.
All right, great, thank you. Board members, any questions for city staff at this time? All right, great, and we have the applicant with us this evening? If you'd like to give us a presentation or anything to add? Come on up.
Hi, everybody, my name's Jonah Dewaters. I'm a civil engineer with Oak Point Associates, representing the Saco School Department. In the interest of time, I won't repeat, I have the presentation from last time, but it's getting late, so. I won't reshare unless anybody feels it necessary. There was one outstanding item from the last meeting that I did want to touch on. We had, there was some discussion about the building height. There's one spot on the building where it actually exceeded the height requirement for the Mobile Home Park Overlay District. We worked with the code enforcement officer on that. And it was determined that the, the piece that extends is actually an enclosed stair tower to provide roof access. And it was determined that that was not subject to the height restriction requirement because it was just to provide egress to the roof and wasn't considered something that had floor area. So it's compliant with the city's requirements.
Okay, great. Any questions by Board members for the applicant at this time? Jeff?
I had some questions, reading through the, the geo, the final geological study. There was a section that talked about the playground and some, some type of lightweight fill that I'd never heard about before, almost like a polymer glass fill. I didn't write it down right, and I was just wondering, can you tell me, has that been like an acceptable product that's been used for a fair amount of time? It seemed like they were concerned about the loading in that area. And it had very specific handling instructions. But I mean, is there any long-term concern about leaching or any contamination from whatever this type of material is that's being used?
Short answer, no. No, there isn't. So what it is, is there's a concern about slope stability. So you've got this, you've got this steep slope that runs down to the brook. And the concern is that if you put too much weight at the top of the hill, it starts to want to push the fill out at the bottom. So this lightweight fill, it's a glass, it's like a glass aggregate. It's called glavel. It's basically recycled glass mixed into aggregate. We have a sample in our office, but it's, it's almost got the same kind of weight as like charcoal. It's fairly commonly used under roads and in areas of, of where there's lightweight fill required. A million years ago, we used to use a product called Geo Foam. You've probably seen it behind bridge abutments. It looks like giant styrofoam blocks. This is a little easier to work with than that. But it's, it's buried quite a ways below grade, like 18 inches below grade. And it's wrapped in a Geo textile. But it's, it's inert. It's glass, so it'll last for, I think, five million years or something is the, how long it takes glass to degrade. But yeah, it, there isn't any concerns with leaching out or anything like that.
So it was being wrapped in a Geo textile just to prevent it from like contents, leaching into the surrounding soils versus like some sort of containment? It was?
It, it's more to prevent the fine material from the soil around it, from washing in between, into all the spaces in between it.
Then my second question was, there was a lot of conversation about the snow plowing, stuff with the Public Works. And it seems like we run into this all the time with the large parking areas. When we, you know, we have that standard that says, hey, you have to have this interior landscaping, but then where do you put all the snow? Can you just give us an update as to how the discussion and the planning of where the snow storage is going?
So I think the correspondence back and forth with Public Works, nothing's changed since we spoke to them. The intent is most of the snow storage will happen on the outsides of the sidewalks. But yeah, you're absolutely right. It's that constant battle between breaking up this parking lots so that it doesn't feel like a sea of pavement, but also providing adequate space for snow storage. And we were continuing to work with Public Works and we've made sure that any of their questions have been answered. Tried to provide as much snow storage as we could without kind of having large amounts of unused area.
And I think the final question, it seemed like there was like 17 construction easements that are kind of outstanding. Is that, is that just because of getting all the parties onto the same page? I mean, you guys have been pretty focused and fast-tracked and, I mean, you had your, your traffic movement permit before most applicants that we've seen. It seemed like you've had a lot of things lined up. And this one just seems like it's kind of hanging out there. Is there anybody that's particularly difficult to work with at this point? Or you just think this is the normal part of progression and, and you're feeling like it's still on track?
So we haven't had any issues with any of the abutters. We're still waiting to hear back from a number of them. Basically, the way the project is working is it's almost, at this point, kind of split into three parts. So part one is the actual school development. That's on the site. And then part two is the work at the intersection, which is most of those temporary construction easements. And then part three is the sidewalks up Route One and the entrance from Route One, which the DOT actually committed to take over as their own project. So we're putting together the design drawings and then the DOT is going to actually work on the, managing the construction. But we're still working on getting the sign-offs from the abutters for the intersection and the sidewalks. We haven't had any trouble working with anybody to date.
That was all I had for questions, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Great, thank you, Jeff. Any other thoughts or questions from Board members? I had, I had a few, Jonah, the, so there was the pump station design that, that still needs to be updated, is that correct?
We responded to, so because of the size of the project, we submitted to the sewer department before we actually submitted our site plan review application. We received some comments, we've answered those. We got some more comments a few days ago. I think they got stuck in the pipeline somewhere. But we're still responding to them, they're fairly minor.
Okay, that may have been a misunderstanding in the order of, of comments in there. There were, just to make sure I understand all of it, there were a bunch of fee waivers granted by council. But then, how does that? Are there any fees that the school department is responsible for outside of that? Or how does, how does that just? Just trying to understand the whole big picture, I guess, we don't.
Sure. So this part of, this is largely a state-funded school project, which means like 75% of it's funded by the state. And one of the state's policies is they don't cover fees for municipal permitting. So like a building permit, for instance. So we got approved, we got the, the municipal fees waived by the City Council. So that would be fees that are happening when you have an in-house reviewer reviewing portions of the project. Third-party reviewers, say for traffic or for wetlands or landscaping, those were not waived. Neither were impact fees. So for example, the sewer impact fee, which is pretty significant, that was not waived.
Okay, that was, that was the specific one I was thinking in my head was.
Yeah, we tried, but.
And then there was the, the maintenance, the maintenance building and then future expansion. That's all, how that develops would be an amendment to the project in the future if it comes to fruition, sort of thing.
So the future expansion, absolutely.
Yeah.
The maintenance building is going to be a separate project. But my understanding is it's very likely to happen. So that piece of it is shown on the drawings and permitted through the DEP. The extra impervious area for the building is, we don't have a design yet for the building. So from a site standpoint, it's a rectangle. But when they actually have a building design, they'll need appropriate building permits and things like that.
Sure, okay, because that, there was the discussion in there about the foundation for it and that was already part of it.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, that's still sort of a moving target. But at this point, it's looking like that whole thing, the foundation, the slab, the actual building structure, that'll all be part of a project that'll happen really shortly after schools, the schools built. The school project itself will bring utilities to the area so that they have something to connect to for water, sewer, or electric, foundation drainage.
Okay. And another one I had was the, the off-site improvements for the 195 eastbound off-ramp. There's some cameras in there that had to do with. off-ramp. There's some cameras in there that had to do with timing. Is that how I understand it? But there's, they're not proposing two lanes within there. It's all still a single lane. And can you, can you talk about that? Because I'm trying to envision...
Sure.
What the camera, or I'm trying to understand what the improvement is going to do and the goal of the improvement and its intent.
Sure. So what it is, is it's called a preemption system. So the concern that the DOT had was with traffic backing up onto 195. So the idea behind that preemption system, as I understand it, is there's a camera there that senses when traffic's starting to back up and adjusts the timing on the lights at the intersection to allow folks to change it so that folks don't get stuck sitting on 195. So it's, it's kind of a temporary adjustment of the green light times to get people out of one, off of 195 and onto Route One. But it's not actually changing any of the traffic pattern, like permanently changing any of the traffic pattern at that intersection.
Do you know, what's the relevancy to the school project for that? I'm trying to understand, because all of that is straight to Ocean Park or south on Route One. And I'm trying to understand the relationship, why, why that concern for the school further north?
It has to do with the way the traffic study evaluated where people were coming from. And that intersection's already tricky. So it was sort of an acknowledgement that some people are going to come that way. Get off and take industrial way, get on 195 and maybe get off or come from other areas. Or if there's traffic headed northbound on Route One, that might cause a bit more of a traffic jam through there. That's where that kind of came from. I also believe that there's a whole bunch of work happening, kind of conceptually at that intersection anyway. So this is sort of part of that. I don't know exactly what's happening. It's outside of the scope of our project, but I know they're looking at a bunch of different things for that area.
Okay. Well, that's, if that's in conjunction with the bigger picture that they may be thinking about, that starts to make sense. It's not a very good intersection.
No.
It's not. It's dangerous. People blast down the breakdown lane regardless of the signs that are in place. And I was just trying to understand.
Actually, I have 20 years of experience with that intersection. That's the way I commute to work. So very familiar with it.
Yeah. Okay. The, the last question I had, it's, I feel it's, I feel like it's a big one. It's the, we're in, we're in a little bit of a time of chaos here. So my first thought is security for the site. I know there's, there's sort of the definition within the play areas, but I guess I'm, I'm asking or wondering about any concessions made or talked about for site security during school hours and drop-off and pickoff. Pickup, we have buses coming in. We have that specific designated area. We have, we have staff parking areas. We have people dropping off. There's a lot of activity there. And then understanding how the school, the building itself functions during class hours. But how does, how does the site remain safe? Has that been taken into account? Any discussion about gates or allowing, I mean, there's all kinds of pieces and parts to it, but the overall big picture, big picture of site security and site safety, you know, beyond just the building, but the whole, the whole property. It's quite a large property. There's a lot of outdoor space. There's, there's a lot of, a lot of space there.
So this comes up on every school project, and it's always that dance between providing security but not making it feel like a prison that you're driving into because schools by nature are supposed to be open and inviting. So we take this, take all of this into account when we start the planning process. And we actually had a number of meetings with the local folks here, the police department, to talk about different ways of access, how things would work in the event of an emergency. The DOE also has its own security team that reviewed the project and provided some comments. So kind of the, the smallish items include the doors stay locked at all times. There's controlled entry. There's only one spot you can get in and out through the main entrance. The staff has to buzz you in. So from a school kind of standpoint, all the exterior doors stay locked. Beyond that, one of the things that the police department actually liked about the site is the fact that there's two entrances. So it gives them a way to, people aren't blocked at one spot. If there is some sort of incident, there's a way to get in and out through the back. We also talked about providing ways to get possible emergency access between the two buildings for police cars. So there's some removable ballers between the two buildings to allow a corridor if a police officer needed to get through. There's fire department access around the back that also doubles as, doubles the security. Beyond that, providing adequate lighting for security is important, and that's one of the things we look at and making sure that all the pedestrian walkways and the areas around the building are well-lit. And that was something we took into consideration here. But we did, we did think about it and worked as closely as we could with, with the local police department and the state's security folks.
Sure. I'm sure I'm not the first one to, to ask about it.
It comes up more and more, but it's definitely something we look at really hard.
Yeah, it, it's a, I know there's been a project, trying to remember. Emily would remember. She has a mind like a trap. But there, there was concern or a comment from the police department about keeping vegetation and buffering along the edge of the property cut back a little bit so there's less place to hide. So there's why we want, want vegetation and we want green space and we want this, we want it to be beautiful. It was just a, just wanted to say it, just ask it, just security measures. But I think that's all of my questions. Any other thoughts from board members?
Mr. Chair, I'll, I'll move to open the public hearing.
I will second.
Thank you for the motion, Jim, and the second, Jeff. Any additional discussion on opening the public hearing? All right, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
A vote yes as well. Motion passes seven zero to open the public hearing. If anyone is with us this evening that would like to speak on this item, please come to the podium and state your name and address for the record, and we will collect comments and address them accordingly.
Mr. Chair, not seeing any members of the public coming forward to speak, I'd move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you for the motion, Joyce, and the second, Jim. Any additional discussion on the motion? All right, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
I vote yes as well. Jeff?
I'll vote yes as well, thank you.
As well, thank you. I knew there was, I knew I missed somebody. Seven zero. Just keeping, just making sure you guys are paying attention here. Motion passes seven zero to close the public hearing.
Mr. Chair, would it be possible to request that the staff provide us with draft findings of fact and conditions of approval for the next meeting?
Sure.
Mr. Chair, staff will provide you with that.
Great, thank you.
Sure.
Do we have an opportunity to see this item again, to review those draft findings at another date?
Mr. Chair, I think that October 21st is probably the best opportunity at this point.
All right, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So Mr. Chair, if I, just may point out, if it is the 21st, we have to be careful because that's going to be in our 30-day window. So can we try to make sure that it's near the top early in the agenda?
Sure.
I think it's past our 30-day window, isn't it?
Yeah, I was just looking at the date.
Today's the 16th, right?
Obviously, it is well past my bedtime. I apologize, but at least...
So Mr. Chair, does that mean we need to have, I mean, we need to either table the public hearing or get the applicant's permission to continue this to the 21st?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, I would think if the applicant consents to us continuing it out to October 21st, that would work fine.
Yes, thank you, Jim.
We might get to you before nine o'clock, too.
The applicant would appreciate that. That's fine. The sooner we can get it approved, the better. Just for everybody's context, it is out to bid right now. We're expecting the bids to be awarded sometime in early October. And obviously, we're not going to break ground without site plan approval. So it's important that we get that to avoid any possible delays. I think during, we had one of these for the tree clearing, and there was some issues where there were, we had to have another meeting to get all the plans signed. So I guess I would request that if we have the draft findings of fact at the next meeting, that we can also have the plan signed at the same meeting to avoid that.
Well, Mr. Chair, I know in our packet, there was a suggestion that if we had other issues or concerns with the project, it would be continued till October 7. And I know we're putting a lot of burden on our staff, particularly since some of them are newer. But if it's at all possible to have the findings of, draft findings of fact and conditions of approval by October 7, I mean, that's, it's only two weeks away, I know. But that set of meeting where we might have taken up this proposal anyway, that would speed up the project and, and also eliminate our worry about the 30 days.
Yeah, thank you, Jim. Lauren?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I think that October 7 probably is the, is the solution that we're looking for here. So I think we will have draft findings for October 7. And then we'll need to have the conditions of approval printed on the plan set. So they'll have to, the plan will actually have to be signed at the following meeting or after October 7. So...
Sure. So we can, for our October 7 meeting, we could have draft findings of fact and draft conditions of approval?
Yes.
And if the applicant would like, he could, they could provide that plan set with the conditions. If there are any changes to the condition, then the plan set would need to be revised.
That's correct.
So there's, there's a potential risk there, but that's something that the board can do. If the board finds any adjustments to the conditions, then the next available time would be the October 21st meeting to sign the plans. And then pending the 7th meeting, how that goes, that, there may be a determination that meeting, if that makes sense. So we'll...
Yep, yep. So I'm clear. We'll put the draft findings of fact on the plan set, and I'll bring this copy with me, provided it gets approved and there aren't any amendments required. You guys will just sign it at the end of the meeting. If there are, we'll amend it and do it at the next one.
Correct.
Mr. Chair, isn't it just the draft conditions of approval go on the plan?
Correct, yeah. Draft conditions. It's late.
Right.
Correct. Draft conditions of approval on the plan set with, with the planning board.
Yeah, yeah. And I'll, I'll coordinate with Lauren on number of signature lines and all of, all those things. We'll coordinate offline and...
Great.
Make sure that's available.
Thank you.
So we had an early discussion here, but there's, we've, we've requested that staff put together draft findings of fact and condition of approval for board's review at our next available meeting anticipated for October 7. So with that, if we could get a formal motion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we continue review of this matter until October 7.
I will second.
All right, thank you for the motion, Jim, and the second, Jeff. Any additional discussion on the motion to continue this item to October 7 and request the staff provide draft findings of fact and conditions of approval? All right, those in favor, Jim?
Yes.
Carrie Lynn?
Yes.
Joyce?
Yes.
Jeff?
Yes.
Camille?
Yes.
Catherine?
Yes.
A vote yes as well. Motion passes seven zero. All right, great. We'll see you on the 7th.
Sounds good. Thanks.
Thank you. So with that, we've already moved to table items eight, eight C and eight D. With that, we have received general correspondences in our after-the-fact packet this evening. Are there any additional items of general correspondence, Lauren or Ben?
Mr. Chair, there are no additional items of general correspondence.
All right, thank you, Lauren. Any planning department updates or discussion topics this evening?
Mr. Chair, the planning department updates are that our planning staff member Shannon Chisholm will be leaving the Sauk Planning Department. Her final day is September 30. And we currently have two positions that are open. And we will be having a reimagining Route One session with GP Cog on September 24 at the Public Works facility.
All right, great. Thank you. Any planning board comments, questions, concerns? Jeff?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just wondering if we can kind of, you know, gang some changeover, but we've been talking about some SLOTA training for our delegated review. If we can kind of maybe keep that just up on the, on the radar. We're kind of in training mode right now. I think it'd be a good time to get a better understanding of our responsibilities during that, that sort of a delegated review. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jeff. All right. And with that, we, just a reminder for board members, we have our certificate of completion that we'll ask to sign and return to Lisa as soon as possible.
Pretty sure you're the only one, Mr. Chair.
That signed it?
That hasn't.
Oh, thank you for the reminder. There's a few of us. I did, I did need to borrow a pen from Carrie Lynn. Any, any documents that need to be signed? Do we have any plan sets? A few plan sets to be signed before everyone leaves would be great as well. Any other remaining items? Lauren?
No remaining items, Mr. Chair.
All right, great. Board members, any final thoughts, questions, words of wisdom? All right, we will, 9:26 PM, we will move to adjourn. Thank you, everyone. Thank you, everyone.